Uh, this is the city of Martindale Plan and zoning meeting, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Plan zoning commission of the city of Martindale Caldwell County will meet for a plan zoning meeting at the following time and place. Uh, time for roll call. Sam Houston Clinton.
Here.
Catherine Glaze.
Here.
Sonia Villalopos.
Yeah.
Nicholas Styler.
Here.
Here, I just had time. And Matthew McGovern.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Go ahead, do you want to?
Yes, and I will send the implication. Dear gracious heavenly father, thank you, Lord. Thank you for the recent rain and thank you for the rain that we will have next week. Thank you heavenly father for our beautiful little town and for all of the people who have come out tonight to help us govern. Lord God, we just ask that you be with us and that you give us discernment to make wise decisions. And as always, I thank you for the gift of salvation. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Uh, now, we're gonna have public comments, and I guess this will be just for the plan and zoning portion of this, because we're gonna have plan and zoning, we're gonna have a couple comments in our regular city council, which is after this meeting. So do we have any, anybody wants to speak concerning plan and zoning? Public comments? Any emails?
No.
Others? Okay, let's get right to business. Okay. So. Number two, do business discussion, possible action items. Two point one, discussion, possible action motion to accept or deny the variance request from chapter one five, four point zero two easements for the review subdivision final plat submitted. So, I guess it's your turn.
Oh, good. Brad, good to see you guys. Like the beer? Uh, you see here, um, yeah, so we're here with final plats, um, and we have a variance request um, per section one fifty-four point oh-two of y'all's codes specifically regarding the overlapping of the utility and the drainage easements. Um, the reason for the request is the assignment of the roadside ditch is pretty far off the right of way to the existing centric fiber lines. We're trying not to dig and relocate those. So if we're having to have the DE for the drainage ditch and then also the PU, it just puts a very big comforts on the, on the lots. Secondly.
Could you, real quick, could you put up a map sort of, I'd like to see what he's talking about.
I'm working on it.
Please introduce yourself and who you work with.
Yes, my name is Chris Lozano for Quash Consultants. Um, I'm representing Landzola, um, for the, um, as a representative developer.
Thank you.
Uh.
Put that way, you kind of.
Starting, just give it one second.
Yeah. So, what we currently have in the design is we have obviously the existing roadway of Northwest River Road and then the proposed sidewalk in the ditch outside of that. Um, the reason for that layout is to avoid the fiber line that runs along the north right of way of Northwest River Road.
Um, can you kind of, can you kind of show that off just kind of?
Yeah. See. Laser pointer. Laser pointer.
Doesn't work on a TV.
Yeah, so there's a ditch outside the right of way. You can see we're already in easement in that location. Um, we worked with Martindale Water Supply to finalize the water sign within that ditch and they were fine with being in the back slope of the ditch and they didn't require it being separate easement. Um, Martindale Water Supply has already approved the whole, um, water layouts. They're stepping in that. Um, and so, but the main reason for the, for the actually approach was one, to avoid the fiber line. That's why the ditch is in that location and the two, just to not have an additional PU on top of the, um, the drainage easement. Um, talking with Gary, obviously the city's plan is to add curb and gutter to that roadway. If that's the case, that roadside ditch will go away and that drainage isn't needed anyways. And so ultimately you'll have a PU there kind of unencumbered in the future. Um, and that was kind of some of the discussion we were having while kind of working through the comments for the various requests.
So if we put curb and gutters, what would that approximately be on that, on this map?
So it would be right at the edge of pavement, um, where it says EOP right there. Your curb and gutter would be there except for the the road more than likely in this situation would probably have to be regraded to be a little lower so we can catch that over the curb.
A little wider, probably?
Wider is gonna be based on y'all's transportation plan.
Well, because right now, what is, uh, what is our, uh, I know that road's not very wide right now currently, twenty twenty.
Fairly.
The twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Actual asphalt?
Yeah.
And probably about there, but I think the, the right of way, it's, it's fairly wide. I think the road's degraded on the edges to.
Because eventually we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to widen that. It, you know, if we go county spec or something, we're gonna have to widen that road. So is that gonna impede our easement in there in the future?
So again, if you go curb and gutter, then essentially the ditch goes away, right? Because you're not gonna have a roadside ditch and curb and gutter. You're gonna enter that into the street system. And so essentially that entire DE is, is basically useless from a drainage standpoint, because you're capturing it with the road. Um, basically, if you're going a, a county spec road in the future, county minimums are twenty feet wide, four foot paved shoulders, that's twenty-eight feet pavement. Culver County, um, so it's definitely a little bit wider than, you know, what you guys have now. It would actually encroaching the sidewalk. Um, but essentially because you're having to redesign that whole thing to go curb and gutter, you kind of have to rework that whole area anyways as part of the project.
You mean in the future, if the road gets widened, then the culvert itself would be in an enclosed culvert with sidewalks and the driveways on top of it?
So currently, so we would have driveway culverts with this design. It's just a roadside ditch. And so in the future, if you're going curb and gutter, you introduce curb inlets into the road section, storm sewer under the road. It's a complete change in drainage design. Um, and so with that, um, regrade has to be accounted for to make sure that, you know, we're not pawning up water outside of back of curb and within the right of way. So, um, ultimately, you know, that ditch, that ditch area when the drainage outside of right of way will essentially be regraded to make sure that all that water flows into the, into the actual roadway and over the curb to be captured in the curb.
So there's what, eleven lots on the quail run side?
I believe so, yeah.
And the, uh, the drainage, uh, what is that, three lot, eleven is the drainage off the field behind there? So that is gonna cut into that, uh, ditch there or enter into the ditch and then that other drainage.
Correct, so that, the, we provided drainage even on large a lot for the commercial behind the residential portion. And that way, in the future, when that commercial comes to develop, if they do, do have a pond or just have to discharge their stormwater, they have a drainage there that they can drain through instead of having to work with the neighbors to try to get a drainage easement after the fact, or giving them a place to discharge at their low point to get to ultimately the ditch on Quail Run Road and then the culverts under Northwest River Road to San Marcos to the rivers.
Yeah, I, I, I was surprised of the other Landzola land, a hundred acres that's on the upside of Highway eighty because underneath Highway eighty, that Quail Run, there's a six-five-three culvert that currently exists. And so I guess the developer has to make minimal accommodations because that's not included in the development plan of any type of runoff from the, uh, commercial, uh, zoning on either side of Highway eighty or the hundred acres above that which Landzola owns.
Correct, so those will be considered for drainage design at the time of development. So right now, there's no increase, no, there's no change. At the time of development, obviously, we'll go through review with Gary, um, to review the drainage similar to like we did here and, you know, accommodate any increases and discharge through an attention pond or increased conveyance if that seems, you know, the more appropriate action. So those will all kind of come up when we go develop that.
And then I, I have one last question and then I'll let others ask, but so the city would be responsible for maintaining that drainage ditch? Since it's in our easement?
Yes, sir.
And so who maintains the driveways and the culverts on top of the drainage ditch? Would the city also be responsible for that?
No, so the, the driveway within the right of way is considered public and then outside the right of way will be privately maintained. And that's typical for, for single family residential. So the driveway within the right of way, typically designed per city or county specs, wherever the driveway is, um, there's, you know, standard details that the state adopts to say it's gonna be concrete or whatever it's gonna be. Um, after that, you know, it can transition to base or whatever, whatever y'all city code requires. Um, so fortunately outside the right of way would be maintained by the landlord.
And, and, and if we do not grant this variance, how many more feet, is it fifteen more feet that, that, that they would need to, to have in that, uh, additional? Uh, ten with me?
I think fifteen.
So that would be on their property side.
Additional fifteen feet within. So if you look at the corner, and the, and the big concern is really the corner.
Could you kind of explain that?
Yeah, so.
They, they would have to give up fifteen more.
Just explain it.
Basically.
Yeah, so at the corner, you guys have a lot going on at that corner. There's obviously the centric fiber line. And then instead of having guy wires in the poles across, you guys actually have guy poles. So there's a lot of electric infrastructure in that corner. So instead of putting a ditch in a standard assignment and completely changing on that, we said, let's go around it and make everybody's life easier. And so we went around it, we kind of redirected and redesigned the culvert crossing, um, and kind of reset that ditch further back. And so that's the reason for, you know, the, the bigger DE outside. What it also allows you to do, which was a concern that we had, um, or that you guys brought up in the preliminary plat, was we gave some right of way dedication to the corner so that you guys can actually make a proper radius at that turn. Um, and by pushing that ditch back, it gives you that room to do any needed grading with that turn. So it kind of accomplished two things. It saved us from having to coordinate a lot with centric and a lot with, um, on it and also kind of accommodated y'all on the right of way dedication in the turn.
And they're doubling the culvert size underneath Northwest River. There's currently a three-foot, uh, perforated metal culvert.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a pretty much a crushed thirty-six inch CMP, um, metal pipe. Um, and then we're upsizing it to two thirty-six inch concrete pipes. It'll count for increased, um, storm runoff from the site, and so we increased the conveyance to that point. And so this would basically mitigate any impact from the development on drainage to the San Marcos River.
And are the culverts side by side or on top of each other?
Side by side.
And then you're accommodating with riprap in the seven-foot drop into the gully that exists beneath that current drainage.
Correct, so we'll have parallel wind walls and then we're, we have, um, mortared in riprap so it doesn't go right away. Um, additionally, at that crossing, we worked with Martindale Water. We're actually helping them loop their system around.
Can you show us that, sir?
Yeah, so right there, actually, you can see on this sheet, but right there, we're at waterline where it sits three foot bottom channel. It's coming, there's a board that's gonna come across Quail Run Road and that line actually loops back down across Northwest River Road to loop the system. And so what that allows them to do is if, um, that line under that gully is currently exposed and so they're putting, they're gonna put in some insulation valves in line and that way they have a loop system so they could terminate that line so that the rest of the, um, people that serve that six-inch line aren't without water when that does wash out. So we kind of helped their system get around that. Um, and so we, you know, trying to, trying to be good neighbors, trying to make sure we take care of everybody and not just be a hindrance to, to the city. So, you know, we had a good water supply either way and it wasn't a whole lot to get it looped back in and kind of solve.
So if we, if we did not give you the variance, you would have to do more of a, a, a crease, an easement by what, fif- ten feet?
Fifteen feet.
Could you show us, could you show us on that what happened if we, if we denied the variance?
Yeah, so essentially with that PU, the, you, you would be, be a fifty-foot DE and on top of it would be another fifteen-foot P, uh, PU. So essentially what it does, um, from a, from a look on the lots, it pushes the, the houses really far back. So it's not a great.
So you would lose real estate.
Yeah, you lose real estate essentially because you can't put the house within that, within easements.
Gotcha.
So we're trying to keep them as close to the front as possible because everybody else does and so that way just make it look more, fit in a little bit better.
Plus, plus you're gonna have more land.
Yeah, usable land.
All about, all about square footage.
Usable land, so the land is still ours, it's still taxed, yeah, but again, it's, it's, at the end of the day, um, I can go to the appraisal district and say, hey, I have a sixty-five-foot easement across my front. I want to value my land at the actual usable. So by doing this, it actually is keeping that usable land as, as large as we can, which in terms of also helps with tax values.
We actually been going through this Northwest River Road. We've had some, some citizens raise a lot of hell about easements and right of ways and all that. So that's why I'm asking that question.
Well, see, Mike, I just wanted to say that whenever we talked about this ultimately at the beginning, I, I was one of the ones that voted against it and I think I was one of the ones that suggested that if you opened like the neighborhood to go in through Quail Run or the other way.
Just an example, Sonia, just give, just give an example of it.
There to be fenced along Northwest River Road can Quail Run and the entrance of the houses be, um, through, you know, through a road, through the field or whatever that way? Because we're gonna have that many driveways coming out. I'm hearing that the city of Martindale is gonna have to take care of the, the drainages and the culverts. And I mean, if we don't do the variance, you know, with the, with it being pushed further back, that was a decision based on the developer to have the houses faced that way. So, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing what he's saying, but that's gonna be a cost on the city of Martindale.
Yeah, but if, if you say if they put the road not where the driveways are on Quail Run, but on the inside, they would have to have a two-lane road because you've got to have coming in and out and then that new road would enter out onto Northwest Road and I think at this time, we, we just can't, can't.
So a couple of things on that. If we did a road internal to the subdivision, Martindale would have to maintain that road. It wouldn't be maintained by the developer. So that would be another road you have to maintain on top of Northwest River Road. With this improvement, currently, all the stormwater wants to just come across Northwest River Road. It's called sheet flow condition where it flows across the roadway, which is not an ideal situation because as those flows increase, it starts to damage the roadway and kind of chips away the edges, which is kind of some of the issue that's.
Coolhouse everywhere.
Yeah, and so by doing these drainage improvements, we're taking kind of a burden off the roadway from a maintenance standpoint. So we're trying to not have the drainage just rush across there. So this is gonna control the majority of that drainage coming off these lots to, um, hopefully, you know, extend the life of those roadways. And so the proper drainage design on roadways is ninety percent of the reason roadways fails because there's water pawning in the right of way, too close to the road, things like that.
Yeah.
So this kind of solves that issue. It improves the crushed culvert there at the corner. Um, loops the system for Martindale Water to, to make sure that that six-inch line stays in service. Um, so we've tried to kind of, you know, do as much as we can in the scope of the development to, and still have it be, you know, thought it'd be a development that works for us, but also, you know, take care of y'all and the city as much as we could in that process.
Mike.
Mike, that's, let, let's back up a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay. But you guys obviously have had conversations. You're farther along than I am, okay? So I don't know anything about this. All I know is he's asked for a, a variance.
Now, we're, we're gonna get, we're gonna have, we've got our engineer right here.
I know, but he's asking for a variance, but you're not, you, you're not specifying, and I understand you explained the corner, but you're, you know, you're ahead of us, right? You know, you're way over here. You need to just back up and say, when you gave us this plan before, if I go back three meetings ago and I pulled a map and what I have and what you're showing us here, you've changed the lot sizes, you've made that corner bigger, which I'm all grateful for because you're doing the one thing that I was all for, which was make a radius turn there. And I always said that, that was silly not to take the land or.
Dedicate.
Dedicated, whatever the proper word is obviously, to create a radius so we can make a proper turn and not destroy that corner. But if I read this right, you're moving, in a sense, you're moving the current, um, drainage that's there further away from the road, putting the sidewalk on the road, okay? Connecting it to another thirty-six that's coming from the commercial area. Because if you looked at page seventy-nine, you show some type of a culvert going from the corner coming across. This is where my question really comes from. I think it's seventy-nine, so bear with me. Put down the corner if you could.
Fine.
I know, I, trust me, I couldn't do it on my computer either. It was like, do, do, do.
This was a small place, but you get those ones, they're like a hundred and twenty pages.
We have, we have this hatch line that's going from the corner to the corner there. What are you doing there?
That's a drainage area boundary. So it's just separating a drainage area boundary based on your existing topo. It's not, it's just an imaginary line for drainage areas.
So there's nothing going there, right?
Okay.
So you're simply use the twenty-foot.
Correct, yes, sir.
So there is a twenty-foot between lot twenty and twenty-one, twenty-two there were on the Quail Run. That's where that water's gonna eventually.
It'll come from the commercial lot through the twenty-foot DE to the, to the ditch on Quail Run and then down to the proposed thirty-six.
So you're moving the ditch, clarify for me, because I, I read this and I didn't get any help, so bear with me, so see if I'm right. You're moving the ditch where it is now, taking all those hack berries out just for use. Sam, I know you care about those hack berries. And we're gonna move that ditch ten, fifteen feet further away from the road, create a new ditch along Quail Run, and you're gonna create some type of a minis, very minor ditch system along Northwest River Road to that corner as well.
So, a couple of things to tweak on that. There's really no existing ditch on Northwest River Road.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so we're creating a ditch to control the stormwater.
Yeah.
Um, and yes, moving it outside the right of way to account for the sidewalk being against the road instead of being on the other side of the ditch, which would be pretty far in.
Yep.
Um, and then we're actually not taking all the hackberries out because they're not really in the way because a lot of them are at the corner, kind of where all the poles are. We'll take, we'll take the scrub brush out for you to.
We're okay with that. If they're hackberries, we're okay.
Drainage on Northwest River Road, is that, is that applied here?
It really isn't, that's the.
Yeah, it just kind of comes across.
There really isn't. There's like one or two lots that kind of have a.
Yeah, it's, and it's, and the ditch right now where it is existing is six inches deep, maybe.
Send the ditch.
It doesn't convey much.
Well, that's, that's a great, yeah, exactly.
Where is, where's?
Probably one of the bigger ditches y'all haven't seen.
The drainage ditch would be where it says DE.
Yeah, so along, pretty much along the whole running of, of the subdivision.
When you see this DE, that'll tell you the drainage ditch.
Yes, all those lines are close together. That's the actual contouring for the proposed ditch section.
Easy.
How, so, and that's what you're talking about, within the drainage ditch, ditch, uh, there's gonna be main, city, city's gonna have to maintain within that easement, right?
Correct, so it's a lot easier to maintain a ditch, um, because all you really have to do is mow it as opposed to a road that you have to deal with asphalt and road construction, so.
Well, you could do the math on that.
So it's, it's fairly well easily maintained. It's a forty-one slope off the road. It's a typical, you know.
Forty-one slope.
Yeah, cross-section for county, county standards. I think we're two feet deep. The section's on sheet nine, which I'll just find it here and make it pretty life a little easier.
Take your two, uh, you start off at about two foot on the, on the shallow, and at the culvert system, you're closer to.
Yeah, correct, correct. So it's, it's a fairly good sized ditch to convey the water. I mean, our goal is to, is to minimize the amount of stormwater runoff across Northwest River Road and get this down to the pipes that were installed.
Right, um, right now, there's the ditch on Quail Run, just started thinking about it because I drive it every day and I don't even really notice it. I mean, something that we already need to maintain as well. We don't really maintain it.
We've trimmed it out, I think, twice in the last five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it hasn't really been too much of an issue. Also, there hasn't been houses that kind of contrast that, yeah.
Been for discovered, too.
The other thing you consider with this is because this ditch is so much on these people's property, there's a good chance they're gonna mow it and maintain some of it anyways. So, I mean, if big stars growing up, they're not gonna want their house to look like that in front. You can look at, you know, especially the rural sections that are done in cities. A lot of times they say, hey, it's not that much more. I'll mow it or we need to the big stuff down to kind of help maintain some of that.
It's a brave assumption.
Again, if you're gonna mow it, they're not gonna say no, let's put it that way, but, you know, at a certain point, though, most people will care to.
Sam, we got, you know, we got good park money. We could probably spread that out.
You guys are going to have to.
Come on, man. Hey, can I, can I make a suggestion? Let's, let's let our engineer. I want your input on this.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, we were tasked to review this subdivision, uh, during the final plat submitted. There was a preliminary plat that came in, uh, under the previous engineer, uh, and so that preliminary plat conceptually laid all this out, uh, I guess came through the process and was approved by the city. And so we, we got involved in the final plat submitted, in this submitted. And so conceptually, um, what was presented here generally meant the conceptual plan that was submitted and approved with the preliminary plat. Uh, they did, I think the water line moved over to the north side of the road to address Martindale Water Supply, uh, company comments. Uh, but the, the ditch location and the culvert systems generally were what was presented conceptually in the preliminary plat stage. Uh, so we picked it up, we reviewed it, uh, we went back through your subdivision ordinance to confirm that it generally confirmed or conformed with the ordinance requirements, uh, and it did. We saw that, yeah, I mean, it, it did. The, um, we did have some comments. This was one of them. Uh, they addressed all of the other technical comments that we had. And this was kind of the last outstanding comment because your ordinance requires these to be separated. I would say development codes fit about ninety-five percent of the developments, but there are instances where you have different situations that are worth considering. Uh, in this situation, they're asking to superimpose that drainage easement and public utility easement. Um, and as he mentions, if there were ever any improvements along Northwest River Road or Quail Run in that area, um, some of that drainage stuff may be incorporated into our roadway design. But let's assume that never happened and this is what it was gonna be from this point forward. This is functional. Um, the, the variance request to overlay those easements, um, again, it's a relatively shallow ditch. We were putting a water line in there. We've got the wastewater line in place. Um, they have dedicated some right of way. They're doing the improvements for the culvert system. They're, they're more or less, well, probably better than doubling the capacity of those culverts because the existing thirty-six inch pipe doesn't have the same flow characteristics as the concrete pipe. So we're, we're getting better capacity through that. And then, um, the ditch itself is conveying, uh, water that basically mitigates the impact that we might see from the development of these specific lots. And so with all that being considered and looking at that variance request, from an engineering perspective, all of this stuff works together. If nothing was ever improved here.
That's, that's my point. Go ahead.
It would continue to work together. Uh, if in the future something were to change and this roadway were to be rebuilt, again, they dedicated right of way that, um, appears to be problematic on some other projects you have going on where there's some, there's room to work, so to speak.
What, what about?
So we had no objection to the variance request.
Well, my, okay, we're talking about now, we're talking about ten years from now, we're gonna have development coming in in our ETJ and on Highway eighty. And you know what? I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a horse trader. And I don't know how the rest of this council feels, but I can see your point, but we're good, we're doing you a huge favor by doing this variance because of that easement issue. You're gonna, you're, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, you don't have to dill that big wide easement. I have, I have a proposal for you and of course I have to have approval with my, uh, fellow commissioners here on our plan and zoning. Uh, we were talking about how the, we're concerned about, as we all well know, when the water pools on the pavement, you have, you have issues with your pavement. How about this? Instead of going with two thirty-six inch pipe with about forty-eight inch. We cut the, let me explain, because if I'm correct here, and maybe you can back me up here, in construction, it's all about the labor. You know, open the ditch up, so the cost of going from a thirty, say a thirty-six inch culvert to two forty-eight inch culverts, by doing that, we as a city would get benefit because we would have less, we could do, I don't know, I can't, won't quote you on this, but if we have a two-year event or a five-year event, I mean, we have to do studies, but you will dissipate that water better with a forty-eight inch than you would a thirty-six inch. And another thing, if I correctly assume this, the larger the diameter of the pipe, the less CFS will be discharged on the ditch side going into the river. Is that correct or I'm assuming that wrong? I'm not an engineer.
Well, these are reinforced concrete.
I was gonna say, is that, that's just a.
Through the ditch to the culvert to San Marcos, so it's coming, it's going maybe out of order potentially. The issue with going with larger pipes and the reason why we stuck with thirty-six inch is the road is not high enough to accommodate another foot. So we would basically be cutting into your, into your road section. Yeah, I'm looking at the culvert right now, trying to figure out, you know, do we have room? We're trying to be rude, trying to see if we can actually do it.
And we, what do you open cut that? What do you have to open?
We're gonna open cut it, but the issue is there's a minimum base section through there and we don't want to just build a road. We're gonna open cut it, but the issue is there's a minimum base section through there and we don't wanna just build a road directly on culvert pipes. You want that flex space under, under the road. And so looking at it right now, we have under the road on the high side about three heavy about six inches till we get to your road section, your actual base. And so, you know, if we add another foot to that, which the outside area of the pipe is also getting bigger, and we can't lower the pipe from the downhill side because the water line's there. I mean, the water line's really exposed.
They all water line.
Yeah, right into, right into, right into the.
So what could you, what could you do? What, how much more over thirty-six inch could you do?
Well, we, I, I thought.
Just let me, let me.
No, I'm, but I was gonna say, the three-inch culvert that's there currently on the riverside and Martin Dell Water Supply, water line is touching the culvert currently. I thought they were gonna abandon that, that water line. That's, that's.
So that's in the future when you make concession potentially. It's not right now. The issue looking at, so even if we went to forty-two, you're adding another six inches. We're probably already in your base section. Yeah, I mean, nothing, so being candid, candid with you, I'm not gonna commit to doing any of this until we talk to our client. Just.
I understand, I understand.
So, um, we're already mitigating our impact on development and, frankly, getting concessions from the first meeting and accommodated, you know, horse traded them. Um, we've kinda gone above and beyond on, you know, what our fair share was on a few things. Um, the easement, frankly, the reason the PUEs are there and required by code is for the future connectivity of utilities. All utilities are already there. We have fibers, we have gas, we have electric already in place. We're sending water right now through the easement that Martin Dell Water agreed to and wastewater also. There's no other public utilities in either of you there that would serve this residence, this residential subdivision. So.
Yeah, but, but, but again, you know, we need, as a city, we need to get some, we're giving you a break, you know? I mean, we really are giving you a break with that easement. And I'm just saying, how about, how about if we do this? I, I know you can't make a decision like that. Could we possibly could discuss, could, I mean, first of all, I gotta ask my, my fellow commissioners what they think about this anyway, before I even, even approach you. What do, what do y'all think about increasing the culvert size?
I mean, I think that you as a commissioner have like right to ask, but I think like if you had the information before and you're in communication with them, like you could have asked them that or brought it to them before the meeting.
Well, we, I mean, don't, don't, don't start going there. Sonya, we're trying to solve, we're.
I'm just saying that you could have had a discussion.
We could have, we could have done a lot. But I'm saying we're in a negotiating position right now. And I'm willing as a, as a commissioner, and I gotta make sure that all of y'all are supporting that before I waste this gentleman's time. Because I, I think we need, as a city, need to get benefit. And I gotta ask you, Gary, would, would we, we would get benefit from a larger diameter culvert?
That's what I would ask.
I haven't done the hydraulic study, but I feel like a larger diameter culvert would flow more storm water through it. Um, with that being said, the applicant did double the capacity currently. We also have to remember this corner is on the floodplain. So at some point of improvement, this culvert system's gonna stop functioning when it's full of water and all the water's on top of it. But I, I, I haven't done the hydraulics, Chris, and that would be something you would have to do. I, I feel like there would be some continued benefit going from a thirty-six to a forty-eight. I don't exactly know what that is. At some point, you know, if you put ten thirty-six inch pipes there, you may not have a benefit from that because everything's flowing across the surface because we're during the hundred-year event. So at some point, this development, that, that culvert system becomes storage and not.
Well, I think that's the question. It's, once it's a thirty-six inch event, and what, how much are we actually mitigating after that? You know, like.
But what, I mean, we had, we, we.
So you think about it though, like from this perspective, from where they're at, you know, that water's already, if, if we're at that point, that water's already coming over the roads and.
Well, not, not necessarily. Don't correct.
Down, I mean, there's.
At, at some point, as we go from no rain to the hundred-year event, we're gonna overtop.
But if we don't have consistent thirty-six inch pipe throughout the process, and it's just in this one area, it's not gonna alleviate that much, that much water. You know what I'm saying?
We don't. Let me say one thing.
It would help this intersection.
It would help. Let me add, let me add one other thing. Can, can you put up that map of the area? The backup there of our lots and Highway eighty, if you could? I'm not an engineer and I'll be the first to say, but I'm saying is the area is gonna develop. We all know that and we're gonna have more impervious cover. And this is a perfect opportunity for the city and for your future future, uh, homeowners that build there. If we build bigger culverts, we're gonna have less, you know, what do you think? I don't know about three. I don't know what kind of event. We don't really know, but it will keep less pulling in a, in a, not a fifteen, a two thousand fifteen flood event, but some, it would keep the water off that road in a higher event. And plus, all the impervious cover, cover, cover coming across Highway eighty. Man, if we're already there, that's gonna benefit the city and it's gonna benefit the residents in the future.
So Mike, maybe, let me understand the question. Is the question the impact of future development on the culvert system being built? Or is the question related to the stormwater, um, conveyance size as is built for this development to handle a maximum storm event?
Oh, it's both. It's both. So, I mean, we are, give me right, we're giving them a break. I mean, be realistic about that easement. So.
I think that first question is probably beyond the scope of the plat review regarding the impacts of future development. But the second one, I think, is definitely up for consideration, discussion for, for the purposes of.
I think this conversation needs to be ask all, all commissioners, I would, me personally, I would accept the variance, but, but I'd want to increase the culvert size. Like, so how would, Mr. Buggover, how would you consider?
We can't, we can't, we can't take a speculative vote. If people wanna chime in, they can, but we can't.
Okay, chime in. Gouvern, what do you think?
Well, I'm still trying to figure out what exactly the variance request is. So you're, you're, you're kind of vague here. You, like I said at the beginning. You jumped ahead because you explained it to Mike and to Sam on the cows and you explained it to Gary, but I have not had any conversations with anyone about this, so I'm, I'm ignorant.
Can we go, is, is this the full construction plan set? Can we go to the, the actual plat pages?
Thank you.
Like the second or third?
I can draw you a picture. Let me show you. I can do it on here. That's quicker.
Well, you gotta.
I'm gonna get one more, two more back.
Back?
Yeah, two, like, so it's three seventy-three. Potentially seventy-two.
And then, yeah, the bottom of that page is that. And then if we could generally split.
Adrian, if you could just move the cursor like where he's at.
So, so right here, this says fifteen foot PUE DE of utilities during an easement. Uh, along here is fifteen foot. As we work towards the intersection, it gets a little wider. Those are overlaying the easements. If we don't overlay that easement, this easement right here, the additional fifteen foot, now that easement's gonna be thirty foot right here, where it's twenty-five, it'll be thirty, for thirty-five.
Forty.
An additional fifteen foot.
Yeah, one twenty-five feet.
Yeah, and that corner lot's a lot.
Your man. It's fifty feet DE right now.
So, so, yeah, this, this line would basically push back into the lots an additional fifteen foot consistently on Northwest River Road and Quail Run.
So the proposal is?
To superimpose and overlay those and leave it like we see it here.
So it creates more usable land for per acre.
Yeah.
For them.
With the two easements together.
And the rea, the only reason, the big reason why we, uh, you know, recommender asked Gary about it is because we're not using the additional fifteen foot PUE. The water line's in an assignment within the DE, the wastewater's getting served in front, the electric's already in the roadway, fiber, gas is already in the roadway. So that fifteen foot PUE really doesn't serve anything besides reducing the tax value of the land that you guys are gonna get that alone from. Frankly, that's all it's gonna do. So at this point, just being candid with you, Mike, the developer thought that they were gonna be able to do exactly the ditch across the street where, hey, we're just doing utility ties and we're done. All of this infrastructure, the drainage improvements, all of it, way more than they thought. And we took over this project from the previous engineer and unfortunately, we got to break the news to them and they didn't. If we add more infrastructure, they will walk away and not do this. And you'll be stuck not having undeveloped land sitting there. Like they're, they're at the point of like, if we get this approved, we can't, we can't do it. And so the additional cost is one thing, the ability to put in forty-eight inch pipes, we can't do it from a grade standpoint without regrading the entire road.
Sure. Wait a minute now, let me question, question. You say the water line's the issue, right?
The existing water line is a.
So, so, explain to me, so, so you have an existing water line. Could you dig that, that area, cut that water line, dig, dig it deeper and then splice in a new line for each side?
So that would be something I would have to approve Martin Dell Water to do.
Well, Wes, we could talk to Martin Dell Water Supply.
We can.
That could be done. I'm just saying, okay, go ahead. Let's continue.
So being frank, we are contributing more to the city infrastructure than frankly, we're probably required to if we really dug into it. Our proportionate share has been addressed. Like, that's, that's where we're at. We're improving your maintenance on your road. We're improving your drainage by twice full. On drainage infrastructure that should be improved by.
But, but sir, you're gonna have more impervious cover when you build those, those properties out, driveways, roofs. So you are going to affect the water flow because it's impervious. It's farmland now.
Correct.
So we will increase the runoff.
Correct.
Absolutely. So I'll tell you, you know, you know, t- tell me that it's not, it's, we're, we're helping your, your, your flow. You're not. You're gonna add to the, to our impervious cover and possible flooding. That's why, that's why it's benefit for your future landowners to have a larger culvert to keep the water in a small event from, like right now, at the church, for example, not the church, this old schoolhouse. It's a constant problem and that road is constantly has to be repaired because of that issue. And with all the development coming in, future development, I mean, this is the perfect opportunity for.
There, so he's, uh, but, but.
Let me finish, okay? Let me finish. It's a, you can talk all you want.
Sure.
It's a perfect opportunity for development when we do these properties that we already have this culvert in place. Now, I agree, I agree. You have to get permission from your client and we have to talk to Martin Dell Water Supply. But I think it's a great opportunity and Mr. Nick, you can continue.
Well, I'm just saying all that costs money. And that's from a development standpoint.
That's not our problem, dude.
I mean, it could be our problem.
No, it's not our problem.
If we, if we push them away even further, because they've already, they already come to us once and they did everything they asked and then some.
And then. Well, I don't know about that. They, it's been a constant negotiating position. I don't wanna get into the, to the.
Can I see where the water is gonna go to? Where it's gonna.
Water or the water?
The, where the storm water would drain into. Please, thank you.
I mean, you're, you're adding two culverts.
That we don't have.
We have one roughly. One that's, yeah. We have, we have, we have one.
Also, I mean, this also eliminates the need to that little, you know, landscape timber railroad wall y'all have there.
That, that, that's the road protector there. Call it what it is, you know? Hey.
Let me find this something.
Tommy's had to do a lot of repair in that corner, okay? Uh, we picked a lot of trash up out of there, I'll tell you. It's, it's not a fun little corner.
And cars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's this car. So, but the, the drainage that, that you're putting in there, the, the two thirty-sixes are more than enough to handle the amount of water that you're feeding it. Is, is, you're alluding to that? Is that what you're saying?
Analyze just our development? Yes. The issue is obviously you have upside, upstream water that's never been conveyed properly, it's never been controlled properly. And frankly, upstream development that, you know, at some point could happen, right? At that point, when upstream development is developed, what they're gonna do is they're gonna have to detain for their increase in storm water. So their specific amount at every one time will not increase. Their volume over time would obviously, but they're.
So, can I ask this question? If we were, if we.
It's going.
If we were to, and this is towards the engineer, if we were to set a standard for the city, for situations as of the, as this, because we have a lot of farmland, there's gonna be a lot of conversations as this is, if we're gonna set a standard of what kind of culvert we want, what would that standard be?
I would, I would probably ask that question back. There, uh, San Antonio, Austin, San Marcos, New Braunfels, they all have design requirements.
Sure, that's.
Text, I'd have design requirements too. So if we set a standard from a design perspective, like, uh, believe San Antonio, uh, New Braunfels, believe Ulin, San Marcos, a, a typical design standard for new subdivisions where we're building new streets and new infrastructure, uh, is typically to convey a twenty-five year.
And what are we doing here with two thirty-sixes?
Is the two thirty-sixes convey closer to, to your event for the entire watershed? But I think the increase in flow from this development, from this, uh, subdivision was about twenty-five cubic feet per second.
Yeah, so I'm kinda looking through the way that we.
I think the two thirty-six inch culverts convey about a hundred cubic feet per second.
Yeah, so the, without overtopping the road, the two pipes convey a hundred and seventy CFS than we want. Your current culverts, um, and again, that's assuming that it's not crushed, which can, we can't model crush.
Yeah, yeah.
Conveys fifty-four point seven five CFS. From our development only, which is EX one, EX two, looking at those, our twenty-five views combined, I'll make it simple. Our combined total for the twenty-five year storm is about seventy-seven CFS for, um, our existing and for our proposed, we are right at about a hundred and six. So we are.
Twenty, twenty-five, thirty.
Yeah, so we're right at about the twenty-five year storm for just our development.
Just for your development. That's, that's gonna drain a large area of land in the future.
But again, in those developments, this one's.
I understand.
Special in a way because we're right on the floodplain and it doesn't make sense to detain the floodplain as we look at the overall hydraulics of, of the, um, watershed. The, the development's upstream of us are not within the floodplain. They're going to decrease their flow to the existing. So ultimately, the, the impacts of the upstream developments has to be mitigated by the upstream developments, not put in the downstream landowners.
That's why I was asking, as, as we evolve and grow with the developments coming in, what are we gonna require them, you know?
A hydraulic study.
Well, you know what? I'm gonna go for it right now. I'm gonna make a motion to table this item, two point one, for further discussion with your client and with, uh, and Martin Dell Water Supply and for discussion of possible modifying from a thirty-six to a forty-two.
Mike, the, the, probably the appropriate motion since we have that thirty-day shot clock would be to deny the variance.
Yeah, you have.
Die, okay, I, I.
And we couldn't accept the.
Can I, can I say deny, but I would, but I would accept it.
I think it's, I, I think the motion is deny the variance.
Can I say, with, with modifications, I would accept it.
You have, it, I don't think it's necessary.
I would like to say it like this. I wanna deny the, 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 uh, the variance. However, I, I would like to have further discussion about possible increase of the culvert size from thirty-six to forty-eight inch and being my main concern.
Mike, if I, if I may interject, to kind of move us quicker with this final plat is to approve the variance with the conditions that you're requesting.
Okay, I can do it that way.
And then if bells and the motion.
I'll approve, okay? I make a motion to approve. Okay, I'll do it this way.
We can't do that from a legal standpoint because we don't agree to that stipulation at this time. So we don't wanna have an accepted variance without approval. So we don't want to have an accepted variance without approval because.
Now we do it, hey, ju, hey, bud, do some wording for us, my, my friend. You're the expert.
We're going to need to go in the executive session if you want to do that.
Executive session?
Yep.
But why can't we vote? Why can't, why can't we even vote on it? He made the motion already, why can't we as council members already vote?
You, you are, you are allowed to, all I'm saying is I think that my advice on this needs to be in executive session.
Then you're the chair.
Let's go in executive session.
Sorry, Charlie.
I make a motion to go in the executive session at seven twenty-one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Can, can we just go in the other room and talk?
One eye, two eyes, did we get a vote, Sam?
Yes.
Executive session?
Yes.
Is that enough comment there, Catherine? We were out of executive session at seven forty-two. Okay, new business, two point one, I make a motion to, to accept the variance request from chapter one five four oh two easements for River View subdivision final plat, but I want to put an amendment, the city would be willing to pay the additional cost. Hey, you say it. Say it.
I think if at the time the drainage infrastructure is being installed.
Like the upsizing.
If it is, and if at that time the city can make up the delta to install the infrastructure that Mike has discussed tonight, would Landzola be, be willing to consider as an amendment to the plat application, increasing the size of that infrastructure if and only if the city makes up that cost?
Correct, yeah, so we're going through bidding right now for the current plan, so we'll get those prices back and then we can go ahead and figure out what we can increase it to without modifying the road, not having to raise the road, and then we can get with you all and figure out what that delta is and then we can make a decision.
And, okay.
And also.
And it'll be done at the same time, you know, we have a delta between the current design and then the proposed improvement of the drainage structure.
Right. And, and so before anyone makes any more motions, would your client be willing to accept those terms as an amendment to the final plat application? Again, it, it assumes, all your client does is spec out the different options and then Martin Dale has the option, but not the obligation.
Correct.
To cover this difference.
And if Martin Dale cannot cover it, it would go back to the original.
Exactly, that's.
Yes, no, that's fine, we're agreeable.
Okay, very good, so you can make your motion.
Like, go ahead. All right, okay, I'll make a motion to.
A lot of wording there.
Lot of wording there, I'll make a motion to accept the, the, I've got the wrong glasses, accept the variance request, chapter one four, one five four point zero two easements for the River View subdivision and have an amendment that during, during.
Option for potential upsizing of storm infrastructure at the discretion of the city.
Yes. That'll work.
That sounds really good.
That'll work. Okay. So, and we.
George said write this down.
Okay. Got it down and, and can I add, can I make this during, okay, I'll make a motion then we discuss. Make them, do, we have a second?
I have a second.
You got a second, now discussion? We would be, we would have, we'd actually contact Martin Dale Water Supply also.
You got, see if we can lower that?
Yes, yes, okay, okay.
Yeah, I think we're gonna.
So we, so we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Sam?
I already, I made a second.
Matthew? Aye. Passes. Bob's you.
I made, Mike, since the variance has been approved, there's no outstanding issues on this under, under the law, we have to approve this.
Okay. So, two point two. Two point two, possible action motion to accept or deny the final plat for the River View subdivision.
And, and real, but yes, with the same amendment in.
With the amendment stated previously.
Yes, and so, so we can incorporate that amendment into the, the motion for both two point one and two point two.
Do we have a, do we have a, I make a motion to accept the final plat for the River View with the amendments. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Wait, I have one, one discussion thing, two, two, I have always been concerned, and this is the outside of the final plat because I haven't seen this on the final plat, I'm very concerned about the oak trees on, on those properties. I've seen with the twenty-five lots as they, as they've been divided along Northwest Road, particularly in one lot, there's five trees in one lot, and as you go into the farm buildings until, you have much larger oak trees, so I would hope that you would make a concession and discuss this with the developers to please try and conserve and protect as many of those oak trees. Also, I do have deep concerns about the amount of cut and fill that's, that's being done in that, in that floodplain there along North, Northwest Road, and I would like it sometime if you would explain later that to me about how much are you cutting, how much are you filling, how much is, you know, those things concern me, so the trees and the, and the cut and fill. That's, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? The governor?
Yes.
All right.
Aye.
Passes. Okay. I make a motion to adjourn, to adjourn at seven forty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. Okay, I will call the city, regular city council meeting to order and we will do roll call, but we won't do the, the pledges and invocation again. So Mayor Pro Tem, Sonya Villalobos, Matthew McGovern.
Here.
Nick Stahler.
Yeah.
Mike McClabb.
Here.
And Sam Clayton. Public comments.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to fill my notes.
Okay, Virginia Parker.
Hey, guys, I'm Virginia Parker and I'm coming to as a member of the River Advisory Board, but just an individual tonight. So I want to talk to you all about something that I was a little bit concerned about this week at our River Advisory Board meeting, but I'm not saying this because I think there was any malice or like bad intent behind this, but the River Advisory Board has written two recommendations that we were hoping council would discuss and they weren't brought to you all, and so I want to read them to you and then tell you why we wanted them discussed. The first is regarding the fill being brought into the floodway at the gravel pit on Southeast River Road. The River Advisory Committee recommends that the city of Martin Dale write a cease and desist letter to the landowner regarding fill, request the city's contracted engineer to review the hydrologic studies and hydraulic analysis and report the fill to US Army Corps of Engineers. The reason we asked for that, there, the engineer at the gravel pit wrote saying that they did not in, they did not add more fill than they took out, however, that's not our concern. That is floodway and in our ordinances, it is not allow, it's not allowable to put fill into the floodways. The second time this has happened in a couple years, the first was Mr. Leanda at the Riverside Land where fill was put into the floodway, that all in floods gets picked up and moved downstream, it's really bad for the river, and so we were hoping that y'all would write a cease and desist letter to that gravel pit owner. He did say that at this time, there's no more fill planned, that's not to say that he won't do it again in ten years, and so if we're going to have these ordinances and take time to make these plans, let's abide by them. The second recommendation we were hoping would come to you is the River Advisory Committee recommends that the city council reassess the new parking lot behind the church at three twelve Lockhart Street in regards to possible violations of setback requirements, permit requirements and impervious cover limits. We think they're over the cover limit, impervious cover limits, nothing's being done about it, and so we're hoping that y'all will discuss those two items, just because if we're going to have these measures in place to protect the river, we, you know, we got to enforce them, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did get your email.
You did? And this was in my.
Thank you.
Does know what I'm talking about? So, I'm Noah Brock, I haven't come to one of these in a while, but I have been following the smart terminal development access logistic part, whatever you want to call it, since over a year ago, and part of the development agreement had a stipulation that the developer had to dedicate two parcels for fire stations, three. The first one had to be dedicated within one year of the signing of that agreement, which was January sixteen, so the anniversary of that just happened this week. I finally got a public records request back where they had chosen option two, which is the one that's circled on that map, which is on FM nineteen eighty-four, right next to the memory. Happens to be in Martin Dale ETJ. So San Marcos chose to have a parcel of land dedicated to them, it is now transferred to ownership of the city of San Marcos and it is located in Martin Dale ETJ. What that means, I don't know. I'm here to share that information to you guys. I pointed that fact out to Amanda Hernandez, who is the director of Planning and Development Services in City of San Marcos, and it seemed that she did not realize that. And I don't know what that means for development, I don't know what that means going forward. I can't imagine the city of San Marcos wants to build a fire station that's not going to be annexed into their own city. So this probably means that there's going to be ETJ discussions moving forward, this has already happened, this happened on January sixteen. So, and it's on this map too, like, it's there, it's obviously in the Martin Dale ETJ, it was the first thing I noticed when they hit, I saw an email where they had chosen option two. And I today emailed the mayor of San Marcos pointing this fact out. I'm just here to point that out to you guys so you're aware and you might be in some discussions about ETJs with San Marcos. So I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary Beth Harper.
See you. I'll get you all pretty colors.
We told this about our.
Thank you.
That's a teacher.
Okay, first of all, library has come in the best, the AAR, and they're doing free income tax preparation, the appointments began this past Monday, it's called the library, and they'll start, start the return preparation February sixth, not last until April the ninth, and appointments are on Tuesdays only, nine to eleven and one to five. Okay, other, second item, kite day, that's scheduled for Saturday, April sixth, from twelve to three. And third item, solar eclipse, there's going to be total solar eclipse, you can sit here in Martin Dale.
Mary Beth, kite day was what day?
April sixth.
Okay.
The solar eclipse, April eighth, two things, and that's from twelve noon to three P M. And the people that are driving all over the state, but I'll figure it out, you can't see it in Martin Dale. Okay, second part, okay, in this tablet that you have, on the first page, that white paper, it went back, that's the city budget, not the, the library budget, y'all requested that you wanted to see it, so here it is. The yellow are the totals for each column and the yearly expenses, they're probably down there. And then on the back, the city provides twenty-four thousand dollars and the library has to come up with thirty-eight thousand. And we do that with fundraisers, donations and grants.
We, we can't discuss it now, you're, you're just telling us about it.
Okay, second page is an orange. Okay, this is the library agreement that the city council passed on November sixteenth. Okay, the library board met December the seventh after this was passed. Okay, we did not agree with the verbiage on here and they asked me to contact both the Attorney General and Secretary of State. Secretary of State sent me some really good information about nonprofits. And Mr. Wyman, why did you wait until November to tell the library? Stupid rules, some other. Okay, on, on the orange sheet right here, under number two responsibilities, under item C, provide Martin Dale only the financial information required by nonprofits and it is everything that we're supposed to provide. Okay, on the blue topic. The library director, Ashley Murra, and not paying the, these impact interest, and it changed one item on here, and this was approved by the library board last week, last Thursday. Okay, and one item that was changed, again, under number two responsibilities, at letter C, provide Martin Dale only the financial information required by nonprofits under the law, okay? So whatever law, state law, federal law, whatever, in the library, your library's business hours, it's the same. Okay, tonight, I'll approve the library agreement and I hope that you approve this blue one that the library board voted on, that my friends agreed, so a lot of items stands for by the P. All we get from the city is money required by the state and the use of a restroom and the use of the city dumpster.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonia Villalobos.
I'll just say it from here, so we, we live in Martin Dale, I just wanted to say that right now, we do have a coasty military service member right now, my daughter, she's currently deployed, tomorrow she's celebrating her birthday and I won't be able to see her, talk to her, but just keep her and your other service members and your thoughts and prayers and right now with everything that's going on, she was out in the ocean in a blizzard and to think she was from right here in Martin Dale and, you know, so just keep her in your, in your thoughts and send her good energy for her birthday.
Thank you. How old is she?
She's twenty-four.
Oh, just a puppy.
Wow, twenty-four.
So now we will have a presentation, finally, about the visit Martin Dale project from Mari and Craig, I guess, Mari sent us.
So we've met with you all some time ago and put together a presentation about our proposal and framework for a destination travel organization that would use hotel motel tax to promote tourism and, and businesses here in the city of Martin Dale. I've included the same five slides that I showed last time, I'll go through them quickly, but I just thought you all might want to refresh yourselves with what we talked about, and then I'm here to give you an update on, on what we've done since the last time we spoke, and we have a request at the end of, at the end of this. So, thank you. Our purpose is to promote tourism through branding and awareness campaigns, this is quite common use of hotel motel tax and a quite common activity for cities of all types. In particular, we want it to be measurable and we want it to produce incremental revenue for lodging, restaurants, merchants and other businesses, and we want. And we want this to be in coordination with, with the city council and city management. So we see this being very transparent, coming to you with plans and proposals, coming up, coming to you with updates for what we've accomplished with the use of the funds. The programs, there's five of them. Develop, visitmartindale.org, branding assets and communication systems, logo, font, imagery, slogans, those types of things. We'd like to have signage on Highway 80 that would make people aware when they're passing on Highway 80 that we have a historic town with businesses here. We'd like to create and manage a Visit Martindale website to attract traffic from social media advertising too. We'd like to execute an advertising campaign on social media. And then eventually in phase two, all of those are phase one, eventually in phase two, if we can get to it, we envision a visitor center.
Good question, Mari. This is my opinion, I've been talking about this for several years. I think, I think my priority, if I was you guys, would be a sign on Highway 80. I think that's what would be the most bang for the buck. I want you guys like a nice sign on 142 and 80.
I think you have to have a logo, branding system and stuff that, that can inform and be the substance on that sign. But I think everybody agrees on that.
I think that would be, I think that'd be the most bang for our buck for that. And you know, have little clips, you could say, you could say chili cook off, you know.
We figure out to execute this.
Yeah, July 4th is a little bleep bleeping something.
You know, one suggestion was one of the electronic signs, kind of like Maxwell has. Since our fire department is building a new facility on Highway 80. It might be that the city and the fire department could go together to build that electronic sign.
That's great. And some of the impressions could be for, for Visit Martindale.
Or at least the uniformity of the whole thing, what you're saying. Yeah, marketing, everything should look the same.
We would approach it just like any other product or business.
Hundred percent.
Branding.
Just talking about the fire.
Logo and all that.
Get a color scheme down and go from there.
Mari, I recently saw a San Marcos city council meeting where they're deciding upon the same thing. They're, they're putting two signs up, permanent signs with rock bases. One on Yarrington Road and one down by Posey Road. They seem to need to get a clearance from TexDOT in order to put it in the right of way of the TexDOT. Because we do have our scenic corridor and all that. They were deciding upon, well, should we put an E-Grit on this or not and, and, and all that. And so it was a long discussion, but I think if any of us would like to see the examples of the signs that San Marcos is proposing, that would be a good resource to, to look at those signs, permanent signs. But I am, I am encouraged about your work that you would like to do and, and the creation of these signs. Because the sign we have here at 1979 is way outdated and.
It creates the opposite impression. Well, I think.
Well, a lot of those details that we're going to discuss later, what the purpose of the signs may or may not fall within the bounds of what the law will, the use of hotel tax funds. So there's a lot to think about.
Okay, no, no, I'm, I'm just saying I'm encouraged about hearing this because of what I've seen in the past and what I'm seeing from San Marcos. Thank you.
All right. When we met last, we talked about coming back to city management and council to approve our charter. We'll talk about that later. We've, we've done that. We've talked about creating and presenting a proposal for activities and budget. This was going to be for 2023. This will now will come back for 2024. And as I mentioned earlier, we envision this being a close partnership and at least providing quarterly reports back to city council on what we've done with the funds that have been approved. So the next steps when we met were to present a plan and a budget, agree on the board members and directors, finalize the structure and the operations and do a plan and a budget. So now you're all caught up.
Thank you, Mari.
Well, I'm still, now I'm getting to the new stuff.
Oh, they're going.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Can you, since you mentioned the board members and directors, can we, can we know who are they?
Yeah, yeah, they're coming right here on this slide. It's on this slide. Okay, so we have created a destination marketing organization. It's called visitmartindale.org. It's a 501(c)(6). It's technically a chamber of commerce, but outwardly will be DBA, visitmartindale.org. So it won't be out there as a chamber of commerce, but it's, it's spected as one for IRS purposes. We own the URL to visitmartindale.org. We, we've received an EIN from the IRS. We've applied for nonprofit status with the state of Texas. We expect to have that within a month. Our founding board members are me, Craig and Carlton. The visit, our mission is, the mission of visitmartindale.org is to strengthen, support and promote the economic vitality of our member businesses in the community of Martindale. So that would be our main, our main charter. We will solicit membership citywide, not just in the downtown. So we would want everyone who's in the city of Martindale to, to be able to be part of this and benefit from it. We have gone out to a PR and marketing agency in Austin called Giant Noise. They've actually had a site visit here. They've taken a look at, at Martindale. They've put together a proposal for logo branding and imagery. So this would be the first phase, which could then be used for the signs. It could be used for a social media campaign. It would be the foundation of everything we would do from a marketing point of view. They've been around since 2006. They specialize in Austin, San Antonio, Dallas and Houston. So they know the neighborhood, they know the area, they work with small businesses. So they've been a, they, they were really impressive when we. I might add, their focus is on the hospitality industry. So many of their clients are hotels, resorts, that restaurants, that kind of thing, consumer. If you, go, go to the next slide and you can see examples of this. There you go. So the Driscoll, Low Star Beer, Earl. San Antonio, state of New Mexico, Austin Parks. So they.
Parks.
Parks.
San Antonio.
Brine Parks. All right, I heard that. Port Aransas. So, so they've got experience doing exactly what it is we asked them, would ask them to do.
They love Martindale.
Yeah, they were all about it. They were super excited. They, they, they think there's a lot of potential. This, we all do. So the next slide, please. So this is the, the first proposal that they put together, which would be to create a brand identity to represent Martindale that will help raise awareness for the town and bring traffic to the area, which is consistent with our mission and our charter. Their objectives would be, would be to understand Martindale through a design research project. And then from that, they would create a logo and brand guidelines that would include a logo, a tagline, color palette, fonts and weights, use cases, overall brand tone. And so again, that, that would be the foundation for everything. Visual advertising, social media advertising, everything we would do would be anchored around this, this logo and branding campaign. Next, thank you, next slide. So.
Yeah.
So basically, they, they proposed a fee between 3,500 and $5,250, depending on the amount of hours they would need to do. I mean, from my experience in marketing, that's, that's a pretty good value. Right, I've seen, I've seen them 10,000, 20,000, I've seen them quite a bit more. So to be able to get all of that, even if it were to go to the maximum of 5250, I think that's, that's a very good value. I think this, this agency is, as we've said, is, is solid and experienced. They've been around for, for almost 20 years. They've done what we want to do. They took the time. The, the woman who would be the lead on our account drove from Dallas the day that we met in order to be able to, to see Martindale and to meet with us. So, so I feel like they are, they are committed and genuinely excited about, about the project. So our request is to have city management and city council approve our formation in our charter, which is what we said we would do last time. We're coming back and now asking for that. We're asking for city management and council to approve up to $6,000 in funding, which would be up to $750 in form, in formation expenses and up to the 5250, which was at the high end of their, of their range. Of course, we would provide receipts and expense reports and stuff to back it up. And if it's not, if it's below these amounts, well, then we would, we would spend, you know, up to the full 6,000. And then we would commit to come back with updates on the logo design and branding. Typically what happens is, you know, you, I'm sure many of us have been through this process before. There would be two or three final logos. There would be several taglines to choose from. There would be colors and fonts to pick from. And we would see a working session where we would come back and, and, and share all this information. Again, we did make a decision on, on branding and the logos.
Since we didn't make it an action item, we can't vote on it tonight.
Okay.
We'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
To vote on.
Quick, quick, so a question, don't you think a sign would be the priority first? To put a sign on Highway.
Yeah, but, but the sign has to have a logo. The sign has to have colors and fonts and stuff. So, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing against a sign. I'm, I'm pro sign.
Do we have to go, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just, just throwing it out there. Cause I've always, we've always talked about having a sign. Like in the north, northeast, they have really nice looking, they don't have the big billboards.
I personally feel strongly that we should go through the logo and the branding exercise before we spend the money on a sign.
We don't, we don't have that kind of, we don't have, how much money do we have in the account of Adrian or Wayne?
We'll have a financial report.
We'll look at the financial report. I'm just saying, we don't have a whole lot of money.
We're totally with you, Mike. We're, we want a sign too.
I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just discussing, I'm just saying, I mean, I agree with all this, but I think you, you should have a priority. I think the sign would be the priority.
I think, I think he does have a priority and I really appreciate all the work they.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm just giving you my juice.
I can tell.
I just don't think you can't design the sign without having a branding system to design it.
It's the horse before the carriage.
Yeah.
I think a little deer, I'm a cheap bud.
Only a thousand dollars.
I, I. Just want to add a point. So there's certain, there's certain guidelines and parameters by law that what you can use the hotel motel tax for. And they're centered around tourism and driving people and that kind of thing. Signage is definitely one of those. And so it does, it even says in the language that signage is, is part of it.
And a convention.
I don't know if you noticed before, but that was the second bullet on our, the PowerPoint, was signage on Highway 80. So definitely.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking, I'm, I'm speaking as a citizen, not a council. I'm just looking at money, how much money we got.
We're, we're all for a sign, but you, you have to have a branding system to build a sign.
Do we really need a branding system?
I think the point of confusion is you can't use a hotel tax funds to put a sign out that says Martindale on stone. That's not, that's not a hotel tax.
You can, I, I would disagree with that. It's, it's actually in the writing, but I can show it.
You can, you can use signage to direct visitors to points of interest. And like historical districts, like you'll see them in San Marcos.
Yeah, those.
You know, water recreation this way.
There you go.
You know, dairy softball fields that way.
That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
All those signs have a uniform branding associated with it. That's replicated across.
Exactly right.
Yeah.
I mean, and the last time I looked at the hotel motel tax, it seems to me there's, there would be money to see.
There's ample money in there now. I think it's almost $38,000.
Yeah, I think so. I, I think so. So, so.
It goes with, you know.
I, I just, I just, I think $6,000 to form the organization and to get a branding system is a hell of a bang for the buck.
Okay.
Especially from an agency and the quality of Giant Noise.
So just to set expectations, when it comes to the expenditure funds, we're going to want to establish a contract with the organization once it's established for, for those use of funds or the city itself is going to procure those services. The city itself procures those services, we will have to use an informal bid process over $3,000. I think it's between 3 and 10, that'd be informal with, with three vendors, pretty easy. If, if it goes to a contract, it's something that the city should consider as a contractual requirement to follow a similar like procedure within all of our purchasing policies so that they flow down. And as we consider this, we may want to put some regulations in our ordinance or other things on how the city would oversee expenditures and things. We can do it on contract, that'd be fine. But as, as the city goes forward, just to set expectations and baseline, it may be worth to develop a, a brief, you know, paragraph in our hotel tax ordinance that, that describes how this sort of branding would work going forward.
But, but how can the city update an ordinance or create one that would be possibly outside of the current parameters of the hotel tax bylaws as, as it exists? I mean, are you saying to create our own ordinance that, that would bind with the hotel tax?
We would create a, I don't know if we would frame it as a, a grant or what have you. Or would you say if the city does contract services out pursuant to fulfilling the, you know, according to Texas, you know, tax code such and such, these features will be a requirement under the con, within the contract. Or, or some, some language that just kind of memorializes what we're doing. It's upfront and it could be a resource for future councils, future administrations to, to look back on and say, how, how did this happen? Why did this happen? And it's codified what we're doing. Because foreseeably, you know, Visit Martindale could, could grow. It could morph itself into a chamber of commerce. It could dissolve after, you know, several years. Maybe they want to retire and no one else is left picking it up. You could still use that ordinance to do that same activity under a different type of, or with a different customer.
I do want to thank you guys for all of the work that you've done.
Thanks for your presentation.
You've really been working hard on it.
Okay, we're with, we're with you.
I, I have one, one last question though, because you as a party of the Visit Martindale have actually been one of the major contributors to the hotel tax monies that we have generated so far. So first off, I want to thank, thank you all for that. But will the Visit Martindale also try and incorporate or create ways of that other homeowners that do have Airbnb properties then will be ensconced or enveloped eventually into this Martindale to create?
Definitely, we're just going to try to incentivize people that have Airbnbs to be a part of the membership if they want. Get involved. But if they're, if they're paying their taxes and they're part of Visit Martindale, they'll get a link on the page, on the visitmartindale.org page that says, come stay in Martindale and links to their Airbnb.
And we have weddings that are easily accessible.
Yeah, there'll be other, other places to stay during a big event, a wedding. So it's, we're trying to spread out. Mari and I now own a lot of the Airbnb downtown. We'll include all the Airbnbs. It incentivizes them to get more involved in the city, pay the taxes and hopefully get a link on the page.
There you go.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Question.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going, I don't have much for mayor's report except for this one out in the utility bill today. Kind of recapped what we're doing on, in the office on the grants.
Oh, nice.
And about the two elections, I think sometimes for the public it's confusing, but there's a primary election, which your party, like Republican, Democrat, independent would put on, but you will still vote for the, through the election office. And then the city of Martindale election is Saturday, May 4th. So right now is the time to pick up a packet if you're thinking about running for office. And I encourage you to do so. Okay.
Did you say May 4th? Oh, the election is May 4th.
Yeah, that's the election day.
Deadline for submitting the packets is.
It's February 16th.
Okay.
And so they're online right now. You can download them or you can come here and we'll print one out for you.
And we have three city councils people that are coming for election.
Yeah, so Mike, Nick and Sonia. So let's go on to city administrator.
Yeah, so I want to give you updates on the progress we've made regarding the Texas Fire Development Board, Clean Water State Revolving Fund project that we work, that we're working towards. Just to back up and show where we've been and where we're trying to go. Several developers over the last decade plus have approached the city wanting to do development in the city. And for every single one, one of the. And for every single one, one of the main issues that they face is what to do about wastewater. And not much has been done. We've looked at various options about two or three years ago. We looked, we were approached with opportunity with a private partnership, with a private entity that would make the capital investment to, to build and operate the plant. And with contract with the city for wholesale treatment services. We've had proposed development agreements that would do different things like create mods and then possibly a transition or transfer the ownership of the wastewater treatment facility to the city of Martindale. And all through those discussions, there's, there's always a, a question that was posed, why can't the city do this on its own? So this Texas Water Development Board Clean Water State Resolving, Revolving Fund is practically speaking, the only way to do this on. The way the fund works is we submit a plan proposal for, for a project. And it gets evaluated on kind of a preliminary view and then you're invited back to, to submit a full proposal. The, um, if we submit a full proposal for wastewater treatment plant and it gets approved, approval can look a couple of different ways. The revolving fund basically serves as a bank that's supported by bond investors on the backend. And they give out loans for certain projects and for certain communities, those loans can be, a certain amount of those loans can be forgiven. Some take very substantial amounts, those loans can be forgiven.
What's the interest rate typically, you know?
Yeah, I, I think.
Since we don't have established credit, it's about four to five percent.
Four to five percent. Who knows if that changes under the credit environment? I don't know. I'm not sure how much the revolving fund is affected by the credit. It probably has some effect. So one of the, one of the issues we face in going for a project is what, how much to get a loan for? If you're getting a loan, you have to have customers to pay for a loan. Right, right now, there's, there's no developers with houses built for being built. You've had a small subdivision application that we, they, some prior, but those sort of small developments are going to be satisfied with that recent five hundred thousand dollar grant that we got to expand our treatment plant. And increase the capacity of irrigation of the treated water out there. That's, that project is not going to service the size of these developers who are looking to do a thousand, two thousand, four thousand homes, a lot, right? Currently, our treatment plant serves about two hundred. After the modifications, we might be able to serve another hundred.
And all you think, even with all the upgrades?
You start, you, you start running into TCU permitting issues as you get closer past seventy-five percent capacity, closing into ninety percent capacity and then eventually. So, um, really all we're doing with that five hundred thousand dollar grant is buying us some time. The, so we're faced with an issue of we want to submit for a loan, but we have no customers to service a loan of any significant size. So we have, to get to a treatment facility that would have a modular aspect to it, where we could increase capacity easily for as more developments come to us. We kind of need to start off with, with something that could service seven hundred homes thereabout. Treatment facilities like that have to have enough water coming into them for them to function. So you can't build a plant of a significant size if you don't have enough wastewater coming into it. Which requires us to have customers to, to service it. So what we did is we put out a, a wide announcement and had a webinar of sorts with developers who have contacted the city in the last several years. Walton being one who we have a development agreement with now. It was going through a mud app, TCU application for wastewater treatment plant for their mud. And several others who may have just had a cursory interest, everything in between. We had a pretty significant turnout on that call. Just about everybody we invited attended. And what we asked them was if we're going to go forward with a loan, we're, or a program that essentially is going to be a loan, hopefully most of it's qualified for forgiveness, we're going to need customers. We need to be able to show the Texas Water Development Board that our project is not merely speculative, but more prospective with a definite customer base going forward. To try to get to that seven hundred home threshold. It's not an exact scientific number, but.
Could we, could we use our existing customers?
Yeah, but we're still five hundred customers short. And none of the developments that have, are happening, the subdivisions that are happening are going anywhere close, I think. Probably gonna get built thirty-five homes. And then even if there's some others and that are, have, are slicked on the edges, it's nothing going to be the size. We need one of those big developers who's doing a large tract with many homes to come in and participate in this. And those are happening. There's TCU permit with the Walton agreement that's already in. There's others that are like on the doorstep of being submitted. So what we're trying to do is get something less than a contractual agreement, even a statement, a letter of interest, a letter of intent, or, you know, a letter of support, some, some sort of way to demonstrate the water development board, we're serious, we have customers. If we get this loan, we can be full systems down. So.
Jared, I want to ask real quick. So recently, there was that legislative law that was passed that if developers wish to petition or elect to get out of the ETJ of the city, then they can and they have. So how, how many rooftops or developers do you know of recently that have pulled out of our ETJ?
Well, we don't.
Or have requested to no longer be in our E, ETJ and under the guise of the responsibility of Martindale.
It's, it's, it's somewhat difficult to say because different properties had different amounts and different proposed land uses depending on whether they have wastewater infrastructure or not. I'd say the largest number of all that would probably be about two thousand five hundred homes.
That'd be Walton?
No, that's excluded, Walton's not included. Walton's included, there's another two thousand.
Is this drafted?
Partially, yes. So, um, there are at least two developers were interested. Many others were, hey, good on you, it's a great idea. You're too late to the game for us. We're already getting a commitment going forward. The, the due date for submission is March first.
Oh.
So we are moving really quick to try to nail down these commitments of support from these developers. Some of them are interested in meeting with city council, interested in possibly negotiating development agreements. And so it might be impractical to have a development agreement completed by March first, setting all this stuff up. But the, I would ask the city council, leave space on their calendars open for us between now and, you know, first part of February, where we might be able to come together to discuss some of these issues and make some decisions and possibly engage in some negotiations on, on some of this stuff, so.
I would assume that we would build the plant next to our, our old plant.
Uh, uh, there, there's, without any other agreement in place, that's our only option. We don't own any of the land. And so the more land acquisition you ask for, that's less money that's being spent to dig a hole in.
I guess I'm way ahead, I'm way ahead of you. So that's, that's got to be discussed later.
I mean, if, if a, if a developer is interested in conveying over a portion of their land for us to put a treatment plant on, I mean, we'd totally be interested in that. There's a, there's a plausible method for that to happen. There, there's several scenarios that, that might be considered as we go through this. But really what I want to leave the impression of the city council tonight is we're, we're taking proactive steps to try to make this happen. We're a little bit in a situation of trying to thread a needle. But if we bring developers forward who have expressed interest with, without the, the city's council is actually in, in so much difficult negotiating place, right? Because if there, if there isn't the interest, there isn't treatment.
Early.
At least not, at least not, you know, we could put submit the application, hope for the best, but it's not going to be a very strong application.
Gotcha. The wind?
Yeah.
See, the wind's blowing in our, in our favor.
So.
As you know, as I mentioned before, we do have some, some limited bargaining chip. We have an existing plant.
It's, it's, it's not practical.
I mean, for as you get.
Any of this, because even at its, even at its best, a hundred homes, it barely covers a phase one development for one of these folks.
But what I meant, they're way ahead. So say we're, say somebody, developer comes in, I want to put in fifty homes or they want to start construction and, or whatever. And we say we do get the money and say, hey, we're going to build a plant. Meanwhile, we can often start building limited with using our existing plant.
Yeah, I mean, there's, if the city council recalls, there was a development, a proposed draft development agreement that was going to do exactly that.
Yeah, I remember.
The city council denied it at the eleventh hour, fifty ninth minute.
So long meeting. Okay, that's my question.
I mean, it's, I, I'm a little leery to bring these developers back. Right, if, if we're going to have the same sort of kind of conversation.
You're warning us right now, this is about to come through.
I'm willing to bring these, these folks to the table. We're not, developers aren't a gold mine for us to mine.
I understand.
So if we're going to make this work.
Of course, sure, you.
Anyway, that's, that's, okay, this report will be able to, we'll work with the mayor to kind of put something on the schedule between now and probably the first part of February or first.
Thanks, Jared.
Just, just one quick question. Do you know how many acres the West Ridge Treatment Plant currently is or how much land the city has there?
About forty acres. So it's enough room to build a plant next to our existing plant, bring that one online and then remediate the land where the plant currently is.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's move on. Chief of Police, and what I'd like to do here is probably do three point three and four point one since we have them here.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I got my December report for our activity report for the police department. We, as you can see, if you go look at it, we wrote more warnings in the month of December than we did citations. Being kind.
Merry Christmas.
It's Christmas, it's a holiday. So we wrote sixty-eight warnings and fifty-nine citations. Our activities, we had seven animal calls. That's about what we've.
Does that include the two I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask some more questions about that later. Go ahead.
We had five city ordinance contacts, six parks checks, twenty-eight calls for service, three incident reports, twenty assist county NMS, twenty-six motors assist, five traffic controls, three crash reports and two offense reports. And you see, wrote violations, the city ordinance violations. We wrote some defect, those are all the citations, citations you write. Code enforcement reports. I'm going to have to, I'll, I'm going to get better on these reports of what all, more detailed and what all's happening here. Jared and I spoke about, sorry, we haven't spoke about it, but we talked about it by email about some of the things that he's doing. He's going out and seeing his houses, going out and giving permits, giving out, giving a lot of the warning letters on the windows. So he gave three hanger notices for code violations. He wrote five reports and I have those reports are pretty long and detailed about what all's going on and what all he's seeing. So then when we do have to go back and issue citations and go to court, we'll have documentation for the courts to say, hey, look, you were warned, you got this. We talked to you about this, just a bunch of different steps versus going out and just writing everyone tickets right off the bat. So this time, we're going to have detailed reports that we can go to the courts with when we do write our neighbors citations for these code violations. And, and that's pretty much that on, on those. And I have all those reports and I have them available so that you and I can discuss those.
Hey, real quick, I want to talk about the two dogs.
Well, can, 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 can I ask him a question about code, code stuff first? Okay.
Well, Mike was speaking first.
Okay, yeah, go, go, sorry.
Uh, what's that, those two pit bulls that, that almost took me out?
So I will tell you this, and it's probably not that you want to hear, but once we write the citation to give it to the courts, it's the court's purview to do what they do with the citations. I don't follow up with them unless they issue a warrant. I, the last week when the, our last commission or council meeting when the judge was here, the judge and I spoke about those. And we're, we're, we're prepared to go to court if the people do not come and pay their fines.
Okay, has the, has the premises been checked to make sure those dogs are?
I drive by there almost every.
What are they doing, what are they doing for enclosures? They're on chains or in a cage?
They're inside their house.
Okay, uh, I need to, I guess I need to talk to, maybe Bud can help me with this. I want those dogs labeled as dangerous and vicious.
So.
I, I don't care.
I understand.
You know, I'm going to say it right now. I'm going to be, I'm going to be a real, I'm going to be a jerk here.
Okay.
I almost got killed. And I don't want this to happen to anybody else in this city. And I want to make sure we have, I want to, I want to make sure, Bud, I need your assistance on that. I want those damn dogs labeled as vicious and dangerous.
So I got to follow the state law and the Texas Health and Safety Code.
So how can we make, how can we make this work? Because I'm going to tell you right now, I'm holding myself personally responsible. If somebody gets killed or mauled and I don't do a damn thing about it, I'll hold myself responsible because I got a free pass to jail. Those dogs are going to kill me and kill my dog. And my, and my wife's, my, my mother-in-law is scared to death to come out of her house because of those damn dogs.
I understand.
And I want, I want, I want something done about, I mean, I've been, I've told this story before. I've been, I've been around a long time and I have been, I've had dogs come after me, but I've never had these two dogs like that come after me. Scared, I'm still rattled by them. So I don't know what we can do with the judge, with you. I want to make sure, I would prefer to get those dogs out of town.
Did you follow the process we discussed?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
We got five letters in, five people, we have all witnesses. They all saw this. There's documentation.
Well, it's a complete.
I want to go to court and I would like to know the status of that if I can, to see what type of fine it is.
All you, all you got to do is call up to court, you can find out when the case is going to be set and then when the case is.
Can I, can I attend, can I attend to hearing?
Of course you can.
You got it. Okay, thank you. Nineteen seventy-nine. You don't want, you don't want to encounter these dogs.
No, I know, that's why.
Seriously, I'm going to be, I'm going to be a real asshole here. I'm seriously, this is serious stuff. We have a killer among us. I have never been that afraid in a long time for my well-being in my life. I got lucky, I got to thank Randy Bunker, saved my bacon. If it wouldn't have been for him, I could have been still in the I C U getting my legs cut off. So I'm not going to let this go, okay? I'm going to follow up and I want to, I want to get some right answers. And if we, we have a history here, Mary Paul almost got killed by two damn dogs, it's got to stop.
Well, we haven't seen those dogs back out. I think, I think our tickets worked and I think we talked to those people and.
Well, I got a, I got a, I got a way to fix it, but I'll, I'll leave it at that.
But I think, just like all other crimes, you, you address them when they happen and they don't. But the Health and Safety Code ties my hands on what I can do.
Understand, thank you. I'm done.
Okay.
Go ahead. Sorry, sorry, chief.
That's okay. I'm, I'm good. I don't, I don't, I can't wipe everything to death.
No, you're good, man, appreciate you. Hey, I have a question about something kind of off the subject. There's a really bad wreck on eighty. Do you know what happened over there?
No, the one down, they didn't call me and tell me something, Mays County.
Yeah, that was someone, my wife went by it, someone unfortunately, they did not make it.
They did not look good.
Eighty coming this way right before, on the other side of the twenty-one ramp this morning.
I, I just wanted to.
My wife drove by it right after it happened.
Okay, let's move on to the racial problem.
Well, wait, wait, I have, I have one quick.
Don't forget Sam.
I have one quick question about codes and ordinances. I know recently or in the past three months, you have put hang tags on certain warnings about certain things. I, 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 I think to me, the three main code violation ordinances that I see are people living in RVs, abandoned vehicles and dilapidated structures. What do you feel? What do you feel are the three main things that you are concerned about? And when are you going to start enforcing the warnings that you have given to RV peoples that are living in RVs?
So, uh, don't quote me on the day right now, but prepare for that, that exact date. But it's coming up here pretty quick and we're going to start going enforcing these people. We gave them X number of days to move those RVs, stop living in them, stop doing this. Get them moved. And we're coming up on that threshold here pretty quick. I can call James and get you that answer and I can give it to you.
No, no, if, if, if you say you're working on it, it's, it's.
His reports that he gives to me is, is like photographs, for example, right? He's going by at all hours of the night and sometimes, sometimes we say people are living there because they're, you see them there during the day. But when you get there at nighttime, it's all locked up and no one's there. So they're really probably not living there. They're, they're, they, they live in their, they use.
Which is fine.
Right. And so we got to make sure that what we're saying is, hey, they're actually living there. This has been a livable structure. So he's going by all hours of days and nights and seeing, hey, is there, there are vehicles there? Is there lights on inside there at eleven o'clock at night, two o'clock in the morning? Whatever the case may be. And so that's, that's one thing we're going to prove that they're living there. So when we bring in cases to the courts, we're, we're going to have. Like I said, we're going to have documented details, photographs and everything else. So they really can't come and say, hey, no, I wasn't. But oh, here, here, on this day, here, here's this and this day.
Are they hooked up to the water?
I'm not, so that's a touchy subject to go over and look at somebody's stuff and say, are you hooked to the water?
But we would be able to find out through the bill.
Correct. So we can, we can look at that. But we're just looking at if they're actually living there because someone can be hooked up to the water. They can run water hoses. Yes, in, in the ordinance, they can have water hoses and stuff like that. They can't have, they can't be hooked to the sewer. Right? So that's, we wouldn't be able to tell that unless we actually go up there and look. But they have storage tanks, they have the black water tanks and then the gray water tanks on their RVs usually. So we would look.
Didn't they do that to Mary Paul though?
Oh, I don't know. You have to ask the code enforcement. I don't know. I heard it. I don't.
No, we just told her that it was, uh, it was hooked up. We could see that. Yeah, it was right there. But she wasn't hooked up to septic. She was only hooked up to water.
So what are the three main code violations that you are concerned about now?
We're, we're concerned with all the codes. Not, we don't have, we're going to enforce all the codes and that are, the ordinances that have the city of Martindale. You know, there's people building, we're doing stop work orders. We're, we're telling people to do all kinds of.
You could do that, I know.
Correct. And so we, we do that. I don't want to sit here and say, hey, we're going to focus on this one thing. And then everything else is going to weigh the vice out because the next thing you'll be saying, hey, why didn't this guy cut his grass for six, eight months?
One, one thing that you could possibly analyze or review, and I did speak to the mayor about this, is gray water. Of, of people dumping their washing machine water just out on the ground. I've seen suds galore.
But it, in our ordinance, it says you can do that.
Okay, well, I may want to change.
Remember, I, I showed it to you.
You, you, you and I saw it, but I'm bringing this up to council and saying, I am really tired of seeing sudsy water going into our. And some of this is occurring closest to Martindale water supply.
And I was going to say that I, I, I didn't know it off the top of my head, but that ordinance, I think we, we don't mess with gray water because it's, it's.
Okay, well, if we don't feel we need to, then that's fine. I'll, I'll let that.
That's up to us.
Yes.
City council. Thank you.
Y'all give me a law.
You got it. You enforce human.
Now, onto racial profiling.
Okay, our racial profiling report, this annual report that's due by the state, it's required by the state. And I saw on the thing, it said twenty twenty four racial profiling report. It's actually a twenty three racial profiling report for the year twenty twenty three. It just can't be submitted until twenty twenty four. Uh, but this is our whole report of all the stops that we made and all the contacts we made. I don't want to go through it all. If anybody has any question, I don't think you have read it all, but I looked at it all, reviewed our videos. We're not, uh, we're not racially profiling any individual or any ethnic group or minorities. One part of this report, uh, which it's actually the part I like the best. It, it tells you to go through and you got to get a census. You got to go find the census area and find the demographics and everything else. It opens your eyes every year. So I used this census reporter. I found some other agencies that use this. And basically it gives us our, our population current. So it says we're at thirteen hundred and eleven people. And then it gives us our, the actual racial breakdown and, uh, sex breakdown and everything else. So we've got seven hundred and sixty five males, five hundred and forty six females in Martindale of that thirteen hundred and eleven.
Wait, you say that again?
Seven hundred and sixty five males and five hundred and forty six females.
That's what it feels like.
Been working on that all week.
I've been waiting.
Y'all had a chance to review all that. Did y'all have any questions in regards to the racial profiling report? As soon as y'all approve that I can submit, I will submit to the state.
Any questions? Okay, um, I didn't know we had to approve it.
Oh, no, you just look at, no, you don't have to. If y'all just have any questions, I'll present to y'all data. Just answer the questions.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to four point one since we have you right here. And if you'd like to explain how we were able to come to these radios.
Okay, so we've been talking about it through the budgeting and everything and I've been talking about it with Jared. Caldwell County's fixing to change their radio system. They're going to go to an L C R A system. And it's going to cost, it was going to cost us a lot of money. We're going to have to buy handhelds and in-car radios and so forth. Uh, I don't know if Jared's talked to y'all about it during the budgeting process about keeping some money to decide or whatnot, but. Uh, we wouldn't have been able to communicate with Caldwell County at all had we not got these radios. So I reached out to some friends I knew at, at New Braunfels. They were checking, they're, they have the L C R A system. They're just going to a more. Technologically advanced system with L C R A. And they had these old, they're, they're not old, but they had their previous radios that were, or what we're going to go to. And so they said that they would give me six of them. And they're also, at a future time, they're going to give me three in-car radios as well. So that saved us about seven thousand dollars apiece.
Excellent. Love it. Friends agree. So love it, man.
On these, on the handhelds alone, that saved us like seven, I don't know how much on the car. Uh, we got to get the radios. I have all, I have them all in my possession right now. So, uh.
We just need a motion to accept this donation.
And make a motion to accept the donation of the radios from the New Braunfels Police Department.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion. And a second, is there any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
And I thank y'all for that. That's, uh, I mean, saving us a whole lot of money, saving the city money and it's getting us to where we need to be.
Thank you, Tommy. And Tommy, I'm sorry about my emotional.
Oh, no, no, I totally understand. I.
Emotional outburst.
I just would, I got a Bible of the law and I got to give those people their due process.
I will, trust me, I will follow up on that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Appreciate it. Go get them.
Okay, it looks like Pete Casares has left, but his report is in the packet. Um, we have had a couple of, of alarms this month, so there's been a little extra expense. One bad clog over at, on Bowie Street. And, um, some pumps and things that got all ragged up.
Martindale Apartments too.
Yeah, I think one though was at Madison, if I remember right.
He doesn't specify. There's one in Madison. There's two alarms on Madison and then lift station.
The, at, the, yeah, the apartments seem to cause us a lot of trouble. They're leased people, but. We need to have some education over there or something because.
I think you could put some kind of a screen system or something. I guess I asked Pete that question.
I don't know.
We looked into it. The problem is the hazard waste disposal of the things that you catch in the screen.
Damn it.
Yeah. And then he took care of a couple of requirements for, that are T C E Q requirements. Testing and things, calibration of equipment that needed doing. So if you have any questions, I can relay those to Pete or we'll try and answer them. Otherwise we'll move on. Um, to city accountant, I did want to say, I meant to send an email. Obviously, we're not having the audit. Dwayne called to check on them on Monday because we hadn't gotten the materials yet. And they asked to postpone it until, uh, February fifteenth. So.
Okay.
We won't have the twenty twenty two audit until, until February fifteenth.
Okay, so you see here the bank statement balances as of the eleventh, a few days ago. You see the general fund, street and road court restricted, police restricted utility funds. And the community development fund total one hundred and fifty three thousand dollars at First Lockfire Bank. You see our emergency fund is now fully funded at two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. And then you see the, uh, various, uh, funds that are stored at, uh, P F I A tax pool account. Totally six hundred thousand dollars. Someone mentioned hotel tax earlier, thirty nine thousand, six hundred. I have started moving money into that general fund overflow, uh, as property tax money has been coming in. Uh, you see the park mobile fund, I think you, just under fourteen thousand. I just noticed we got another three hundred dollars.
It's not April the winner. It's not bad, huh?
But, uh, capital fund, you see it ninety six thousand. That was recently funded as well for various capital projects that we're working on. So you see our cash in bank, one million, one hundred and three thousand dollars. And we still owe the comp trower about two hundred and seventy five.
Those names.
So this is the time of year when the money's really flowing in.
We have a good budget here.
And, and one thing to keep in, in, in mind, see that second line, that grant funds there? That's all I'm going to get spent by. When? September. September. So if that's gonna, that's gonna go away or we have to give it back.
Oh, we'll spend it.
What can you use it for, just out of curiosity?
A police car.
Anything we want.
A really nice.
Literally?
Literally.
Uh, there's, there's a spend plan that city council approved. That's fabulous.
Anyway, uh, next page, next page, I guess. Here's our general fund for two months of the year. Brought in a hundred and one thousand through November. It's fourteen, fifteen percent of our budgeted income. See, uh, property taxes have not really started flowing yet. First line item. The, uh, Hays County got their property tax statements out on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, late.
I'm going to take my time.
Paying their, paying their taxes now, so we'll, we'll see more of that coming in. Going up to the personnel. Sixty nine, five oh six today, fourteen percent. That looks on track. And, um, you, the payroll reimbursement from utility looks a little above budget. I'll have to see why that's higher than. Percentage here today. Although I, I do think one thing that's affecting it is our utility clerks are working five days a week now. And I've always put all of their money as a reimbursement. So I'm not sure if that's how we budget it or not.
We budgeted it, but it's an area that we're going to want to consider closely in next week, probably.
All right, so here's, uh, regular operating expenses in the six thousands here. You see fourteen thousand, one fifty six. About fourteen percent of budget, so that looks on plan. The overhead reimbursement for the utility as well. That's for bigger overhead costs, not just direct payroll. On down, we have, uh, other expenses. I can't remember what miscellaneous is at the moment. Three or fifty bucks there. They keep going. And then now we have contractual services at the bottom.
The question about engineering, is, is that, isn't that all covered by grants or you got six thousand dollars in the first two months of the fiscal year?
There's one bill for like fifty eight, fifty nine hundred dollars.
Cause I know we, I thought we took care of the, the roadway, the walkway.
Yeah, so, so everything, every expense that hits our account, it is our general fund first. And then we have to do a journaling to, to move it into the right. And you might actually see that down well where there's a transfer in from a grant. Anything else, street maintenance and repairs, sixty three, seventy five, we'll have there. It's certainly not over budgeted. It looks like, uh, we brought in four thousand, six hundred dollars. We spent somewhere here today.
Excellent.
So that's good. Um, next page is checks that we wrote in November. There's that big one to three one turd. That's a two fifty nine. That, that expense to free Freeman Turk though, perhaps the developer reimburses us for that.
That could be, yes, like tonight, when Gary's here, that will be back to the developer.
But I have been sending bills to the developer. Okay. You saw lots of checks in November. Okay. We'll make some progress on it. Special revenue fund. Twelve thousand dollars coming in.
The hotel tax was, that's only for the first two months, thirty two hundred. But last, the whole fiscal year last year was only seventy seven hundred. So is more people paying or we're just?
Well, um.
We're paying quarterly.
Pays quarterly, big payment quarterly.
So that was way below budget. So you guys talking about getting money for this. The budget for that last year was fifteen thousand. We spent twelve on events. And we only brought in seventy seven hundred. So you're, you know, the point being is everyone paying. Clearly not everyone is paying. Because there's always fifteen thousand. It was very consistent. And then all of a sudden, the last year or so, it's, I mean, I understand COVID has gone down a little because there's not as much of that going on. But there wasn't enough, there wasn't enough income. There should have been, it should have been at least twelve, thirteen thousand. You know what I mean?
Okay, special revenue, you see we brought in ten thousand, seven hundred more than we've spent. And what else is next? Should be utility fund. See fifty five thousand worth fifteen percent. That looks good. How's our expenses compared to that? A little more. A little bit more. During the first couple of months. Two thousand, one step we're doing. And I think, to your point, a lot of this, how, how the, uh, utility clerks are billing. And then we also were expecting, um, in the budget to have rate increases and then. They were delayed until January. So that's also part of this as well.
Yeah, that's about, yeah, that's over a thousand dollars a month.
That's, it's almost fifteen, twelve, fifteen hundred.
No, because it's, yeah, because it's five of, yeah, it's going over thousand, maybe twelve hundred.
I guess that's it. Hopefully that, when I come next month, we'll have the auditors here give their report. I've been in Round Rock all day today and then again tomorrow at Rugger Academy. And, um, so let's.
You learned something?
I, I learned, it looks like we're doing it right.
Good, good.
So we're going to go ahead and move to four point four. Um, this is something that Dwayne has asked for. It will make. It easier to do the audits in the. it easier to do the audits in the future if we buy this software for him.
Where's, where's that?
It's.
Well, I saw the page up there a minute ago.
Clerkbooks.
Will, will it reduce our audit fees?
We expect so.
In theory.
In theory.
Good answer.
We have a yeah, we have an annual report. Annual consolidated financial report. Everyone just calls it the Act for, that's 60 pages long. It's got a lot of information in it. But the second word there is consolidated. And our books here, as you see how I have to show all these separate reports, they're not consolidated. They're not in a format to produce that report. Our auditor's been through with our audit for probably 90 days. And we're waiting for that report to be written. And this software, what it would do is it would consolidate all those reports that you're seeing. Separate reports are data filed into one. And then it would help me do a monthly close that would produce month in and month out, these consolidated reports. I've talked to these people a number of times over the past three years, I would say. And they're by far the most affordable, would utilize the software we already have and would just kind of put additional functionality on top of it. There are certainly higher end programs out there, but the city of 1300, this is probably adequate. There's one other town in Texas right now that's using this particular software. Remember the name of the town? Goodrich, like the tire. I'm not sure, it's somewhere out east Texas. That's using the, that's using the software. So you see the QuickBooks Pro Plus Annual Subscription. We're already paying that every year anyway, so that's not an additional cost. The payroll subscription, we're already paying, that's not an additional cost. The core software you see is $2,700. Initial, the utility billing, $450. We have to buy 10 hours of support. $900. The big cost is consolidating all of those separate files that we have into one at $10,000.
Got a one-time thing?
It is. And this was quoted based on us doing this in, in December. You know, I, I think it, it goes up slightly every month that you go because there's more data for them to have to massage. But there you see the cost, $14,000 one time plus $2,300 annually. But go back up that annual column, I think most of that we're already spending. Yeah, I see that $2,000, $2,169, we're already spending anyway. So that's, it's really not that much monthly annually, I mean.
So the one-time fee is the 10, 6, 9, 0?
No, the 14. Well, look, trail back up. I think it is the 14, because I don't think those QuickBooks costs are in this full time, are they?
No.
Well, it's 14 and then how much safer next year?
Well, it looks like only the $150, $200.
Only concern is you're only one other county in Texas.
Yeah, you're right. They're, they're from up north Iowa, I believe, does it say on there?
Yes.
But, yeah, they're
well, the, what, kind of what happens is cities of a certain size go to these much more robust accounting softwares, in code or for others that. Yeah, it's probably the most popular. Most cities in Texas are probably using that. Both cities in Texas have general fund budgets well over a million dollars or half of that. So really, there's, it, it fills a niche, this company does, that's not common. I feel like it's high unexpected for them to not have much of a customer base in Texas. And the point about will bill reduce our costs on audit? It should. I'm not sure if it's gonna be a lot. But if you look at our past audit reports, I think three pages are the findings. And then another page is the, you know, introductory letter to the caper. And the rest of it is the actual report of charts. So I would expect our, our fee to go down quite significantly if all we're paying the auditor to do is to do a generally acceptable sampling and review and a consultancy analysis and then giving us a letter of this is good or this is, these are fine. So having the, having something that can school up these, these caper experts in where you're from is a useful tool to have. Something like this would likely come out of that ARPA funding. Like before our I would say for now, I would use it as an ARPA funded event and not touch the capital improvement fund. If we need to change our mind later, we can. But most of the ARPA funding was capital improvement based anywhere. It's kind of tangible in my mind for, for the two spend.
Well, you're the CPA. Sell us something. I mean, what's, huh? Well, I'm just saying, do you think we could really, it could really be beneficial for your, for you and the, and the?
I do have watched him work so hard this year at doing the audit because they're in Houston and they wanted everything electronically. And so the utility clerks have been scanning stuff and as he gets it together and stuff. And so I don't know if you remember, but 2021 audit was done by February of 2022 because they came here physically and worked and did the audit very quickly. But this year they've kind of wanted everything just electronically and it was much, much harder for Dwayne.
So it would help your, your workload and your, and your clerks speed up like less.
That problem, well, not necessarily that, but that problem has been alleviated with, I'm now utilizing the archive system that Adrian and the clerk set up to where week in and week out, all of that stuff is scanned and put into our, our electronic archive system. So that when it does come time for the audit, I should only have to, you know, drag and drop some invoices and some various things over to their, to their site. I'll just be a lot more prepared.
Sonia, go ahead and make a motion to accept the purchasing of clerk books accounting software, not to exceed $17,500 from the ARPA fund.
Thank you, Sonia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Where were you?
You didn't say out of the Park Mobile.
Okay, we're gonna go to 4.2. So we had Michael Schroder come and visit with us. And he's moving forward. I don't know if you remember who he is, but that's Tac Redwood. We accepted their development into our ETJ. Probably about a year ago, I would guess.
Yeah.
And in that agreement, we had already agreed that they could continue working with the county on developing their land. But I believe that the engineers there would like an inter-local agreement. So he has come back and asked us to approve this inter-local cooperation agreement with the county.
What number is that on the agenda?
So.
4.2.
That's 4.2. Unfortunately, Mr. Schroder did turn in his, his attachment way ahead of time. On my part, it was not included on the agenda packet.
Can we even do this right now?
In essence, what this does removes cities from being the regulatory agency to subdivide this, this project. And we, we release our right to the county as it originally was intended.
And we had already done it before.
I, I would feel comfortable, I mean, I think I still need to like more information on it.
Yeah, so here, what, what's happening is we had a development agreement that we signed that said all this design standards would be set by the county. When they went to develop those design standards with the county, the county said, wait a minute, we have the inter-local agreement with City of Martindale that says subdivision regulations in the ETJ are as applied by City of Martindale. Well, so now our, that inter-local agreement is in conflict with our development agreement. And so to de-conflict those, we're, we're signing a separate inter-local agreement for the specific property.
We're waiving not all the many.
Waiving the, our ability to apply our subdivision regulations within our ETJ.
And we previously voted to do this already.
To do this already. And this is just cleaning up some of the paperwork.
This was that emergency one we did. You guys had a meeting on a Monday and then had another one on Tuesday.
No, that was grafted.
No, that was the second one. You had to back to that meetings.
No, this, this, this was.
Schroder was first.
Yes.
Correct, you're right. Monday and a Tuesday.
Yes.
And it was in February, it was cold.
He's, he's live on mic.
Okay. But on here, it says, uh, it says, um, in Caldwell County to assign Caldwell County to be the regulatory authority responsible to subdivide it.
So the county's subdivision regulations and the city's subdivision regulations are very similar in most respects. There's a couple of fine details where there are differences. Turbin gutter being just like a little, little example. So our, our development agreement we already have with, with this developer says they're following the county's subdivision regulation. Problem is the county is saying, well, that's in conflict with the inter-local agreement that we have sitting. So to, to give the county assurance of clear to pursue and use improvement authority.
That's what this.
Yeah, continue to be.
That's what this, this document. And I don't know, Michael, I know you're online. Go ahead.
Yes, can I, I'm sorry to, unfortunately, I don't have my computer with wifi, but I have, I've dialed in. And is it okay if I just give a quick synopsis of why we're doing this? Yeah. Great. So we have an agreement to annex. And our, and my development will be annexed into the City of Martindale after it's developed and after the mud bonds are paid off. And part of the, the annexation agreement defines the development standards to meet county development, building code and, and county development, land development. What I failed to do when I did this, we were sort of in a hurry to do it. And we were concerned about San Marcos potentially coming into our area. So we did this thing somewhat quickly. But what I failed to do is, you know, we include the county in our, in our commitment to meet their standards, but we did not make them a party to the agreement. We just have an agreement between, between my group and with the city, with Martindale. So what this, what this does is it really brings in the county as a party to a it kind of, it kind of merges the parties together and says that that the annexation's gonna go forward at, at the appropriate time, that our development will be reviewed. And we'll have to comply with county standards and it'll be reviewed by the county. And that's really all it does. It just merges the agreements that, the agreement that I have with you. And then I have an agreement with the county and it's, kind of merges those two agreements together into a tri-party agreement. And that, that's the nature of this inter-local cooperative agreement. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions?
Our development standards, though, are different than Caldwell County standards.
Yes.
And so then they would, since they're doing that, then would they be abiding by Caldwell County standards?
Yes.
Or by the City of Martindale?
Caldwell County. You're waiving, they're asking, if I'm correct, like, we're waiving jurisdiction or any of our development standards that are currently on the books. You're waiving.
But we already passed that when we accepted them into the ETJ. And, but like he said, we just didn't include Caldwell County in that agreement. It was an agreement between the City of Martindale and Tac Redwood. And we agreed to allow them to use the Caldwell County.
Where is it in our, where is it in the agreement that we signed?
I need to bring a copy.
We do, yeah.
I can not bring a copy of that. I have it at the house.
I wanna see it.
Give me two minutes, I can find. I have it filed.
When we're going with the county, would that change the dark sky ordinance in town? Would they be having to abide by that?
That's a great question. That's a great question.
Can it, can you repeat it?
He, say it, that's.
Well, with the, with the county developments and their codes, would it change the dark sky ordinance that we have in Martindale? Would they, would this, a new development have to abide by the dark sky?
We'd be waiving.
I, I think that this is specific to the regulation of subdivision flats and related permits and plans with respect to the property. So what the dark sky ordinance is, is a new related ordinance, not necessarily development, building, property subdivision ordinance. And so I would, I would, I would expect that it would likely still apply, but we'd have to read it carefully to make sure.
So that's a great.
This agreement is, this agreement is for this property only.
This one I haven't ever looked.
Yeah, the question, Ms. Schroder, from the, from the back was whether the city's dark, dark sky ordinance would be applicable, which addresses certain lighting standards for, for fixtures and, you know, like a gas station or something like that where, where there's no sky shine and glare.
It's in item six of the attachment above.
But on there, it says regulated by Caldwell County and City of Martindale ordinances will not apply. So it's number six. So then why?
That was the, that was the condition, that was the condition of our annexation. It was really the only condition, but that was the condition of our annexation is that we would be governed by Caldwell County.
So now Caldwell County is asking for an interlocal agreement that, that it's okay for them to go ahead and work with Tac Redwood.
But eventually, if that's taken in, annexed into the City of Martindale, then would they thus have to comply? Or would all that?
It already be done.
It'd already be built.
Yeah.
It would, it'd already be built.
Only, only significant remodels would make them conform with our ordinances in that later future.
They already have their mud and everything.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. When, when they build these houses, they're already gonna be inside the city limits.
No.
No.
When the houses are built.
They're not gonna be.
The property owners will be paying, will be paying a mud tax. That mud tax services, the, the debt. And once that debt is substantially paid off nearly 100%, then, then the city has a right of annexation.
A year.
In. So it's several years from now, but when that happens, then they'll be subject to all the ordinance. This is really related to that development phase, that subdivision process, permitting process.
I'm curious to see.
And I would add that at the time of annexation, then the city can, can tax the property owners. I mean, that is the, the end game benefit to the City of Martindale is this is a very sizable project. It's 2,600 homes. And it's about $900 million of AV. So after we spend our money and re- our money and recover our money through the mud district, and after the homeowners pay the mud tax and retire all the debt, then the city can step in and annex the property. And that's part of the annexation agreement. And in consideration for that, I get to go with county standards, which are pretty well established. And, you know, it's, it's, for us, it was, it was, it was a move to, to try and end up with Martindale, but go with the county standards for development governed by Caldwell County. That's really the, the deal that you have in front of you right now. So we're not asking for any water or any sewer. We're gonna build our own sewer plant. We're getting water from Maxwell Water Supply. We're putting in our own roads. We're putting in everything, and we're paying for all of it. And down the road, this property will come into the City of Martindale.
And I need just to ask, so what if we don't do this?
That's, that was my question.
Well, if you don't, if you don't do it, then it would be, it would be in, in conflict with the annexation agreement. I mean, you've already agreed to do it. So if you don't confirm your agreement to it, then you would be essentially in conflict with the annexation agreement. We wouldn't expect that you would do that. But, you know, that would present a real issue for us, because we've already, we already have an agreement with the City of Martindale that was approved concurrent as part of this annexation agreement that it says very clearly that it's Caldwell County and not City of Martindale.
Any comments, Bud?
I mean, the document says what it says. Is, is Caldwell County refusing to perform in some way?
No, no. It, in fact, Caldwell County, it was borderline whether they were gonna ask for this. It's not really necessary. The annexation agreement clearly states what our agenda is for, for approvals and development. But the county wants to have, the county, the county has, will have an agreement with me, but it involves you. I mean, it's, we're committed to letting you annex this. So it's really in everyone's best interest for you to have this memorialized with the county also. All this agreement is doing is.
Right, right. But, but there's, this, this city could not conceivably be in breach of any agreement or failure to execute an additional document. I mean, the, the original document says what it says, and there's no basis for telling it should or must do anything. If, I mean, it, it's, it's potentially a gratuitous act, which is fine.
Yeah, my understanding was this would have to do with the county refusing to perform the review of the subdivision application. So maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately.
All, all this really is, all, all this really is is for clarity's sake. So, so in the annexation agreement, it says what we're gonna do. What, what, what isn't in the annexation agreement is the county being a party to the agreement. And the county wants to memorialize an agreement, which is, an interlocal, which is, it, it's an agreement between you and the county. And it really just memorializes the agreement that I have with you. So all this is really doing is, is bringing in the county as a party to say, yes, we know that Martindale's gonna end up annexing this. We know that, that these guys are gonna have to come and apply and submit their plans to our engineers, and we're gonna be reviewing the plans. And we know what the deal is, and Martindale knows what the deal is. That's all this is. It's just a point of clarification.
I have a question for our, our city staff. Has anybody had a conversation with the Caldwell County?
That's right.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask to make a motion to table this item until somebody from our city staff can talk with Judge Hoppy Hayden and/or to our commissioner from precinct three before we move further.
I'll start my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Are you putting any timeframes on, on this? So, I mean, like, you'd like to have it done within a month, or, I mean, because he's, he's waiting, of course, for us to decide on something.
To be on the next agenda item after they talk to the county representatives.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we submit to their building. I imagine we'll be able to talk to them next week.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, we will. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. So, the library.
Didn't Mrs. Schroder say she wanted to table the library?
She did.
Oh, bud. Bud, you're gonna, whoa. Whoa, man.
Not again.
I do wanna correct something.
Before we consider the agreement, I do wanna correct something that was, that was mentioned. The, the agreement was not changed by me, or as a, as a purpose of representing to the library, a change in the terms of the city. The, what happened was the library was presented the services agreement as the city council approved on, in November. Their board, that, their board met the first part of December. The director and, and his chairman came to me and said, these are the requested changes. I reflected those changes in an electronic document so that we would have version control on what was being considered. Once it was done, I, I suggested that, okay, if this has been approved by the, by the board, then we'll take it to the city council. And he said, well, not so fast. I want the board to look at it again in its final form. So gave her the final form that reflected the changes that she requested, and that that's what the board approved this last week. So if this was not city administrator going in and changing the agreement the city council had, this was me updating the electronic record to reflect what the library was proposing as the agreement.
So the only thing that there's still a glitch in, or that they didn't agree to, was 2C?
Yeah, it was, the only thing that, that was substantially changed, or it's not even, doesn't even change the substantial meaning of the contract. It was literally just removing the reference to specific laws and stating generally the law that would be applied. So to me, I don't, I don't see that have any significant effect on the terms of the agreement from what the city council had previously approved. So for that reason, I recommend approval, but it's something just.
However, we did put in the law because our attorney did say it would be better to have it there.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2024 library service agreement.
Which one?
The latest and greatest.
The one proposed by city council or?
The one proposed by the, by the library.
The one at the top right-hand corner that says approved by L. Library Board January 11th, 34th.
That sounds right.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, there is going to be more discussion. So I have a question of someone from the library board. Does the library board believe that they are not subject to section, Texas Organizational Code, Section 22 dot 352, 352 and 353? And so if I walk into a library or have a citizen of Martindale walk in a library, ask for the records that the attorney says is publicly available, will they be provided? Please say it so we can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. I still want it in the contract. It was in there for a reason, because I don't want this to be a problem. So I don't know why it's been changed. If it's, if it's a procedural thing, you know, I, 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 I'm tired of it. I'm really, really, really tired of it. I really am. I really am. This was, it was, I, I agree that both parties have not been the nicest about doing this, and I defended both parties back and forth over this because one was not being nice, and I defended the other, and I'm being very consistent here. And that is, this, I said so the day one that this is supposed to be public information. Every single nonprofit I've done business with, it's always is, there was supposed to be an exception for this, to the organization, there isn't. And I'm glad we found that, for it's specific. I, I want it in the contract.
How many revisions have we had of this document?
Seven.
Have there been that many?
But it's.
I had seven.
It's, it's several, as we, there's.
We agreed on the last one, right? It was a great point.
So this version, so when the city council last met, it is reflected in the orange sheet that, that's in front of you. It's also reflected in the packet. That, that was what the city council last submitted as a proposed offer. That offer was rejected, and in, and as part of that rejected offer, the library has proposed a separate agreement. They have made an offer of what we see reflected on the blue sheet.
Okay. Thanks for that, clerk.
This is law.
Got a question?
It would, if you went in the library, would you get a copy, a written copy? Because it says you have to come in the library to view the document. Can you have a written copy?
That is what the law says.
Any more questions?
If it says the law, though, wouldn't that pertain to what these?
I understand that I just found out about this about two hours ago.
Surprise!
So the, the substantial meaning of the terms don't change. It's just really whether you include a reference specifying the sections of law of the latest notice.
Sounds good to me.
You could always vote, no?
Hmm?
I said you could always vote against it.
I know, I could.
So we got a second and a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Oh, God.
It's up to you, Clint.
That's what you get for speaking loud.
And you always pause.
I, I have always been wondering about this and why this has been going back and forth, why our attorneys have been talking so much, why their attorneys have been talking so much. As the mayor has mentioned, we're giving them $24,000. Why has this been so complicated? Why has this been dragged through the mud and all this? I, I'm still not sure what the library is not willing to inform us about. I have concerns about that. But could you repeat what we're requiring them to do if I pass this now?
Everything under the law.
The clarification that was put in there was to make sure there was no misunderstanding. Okay, the way, the way it was brought, it was, we, no one was prepared for it at the, at the meeting when I brought it, when Jared brought it up to us. So no one knew. The library, I'm speaking on your behalf, so you correct me, of course, was shocked and unaware of this particular law, as we all were. Okay, so my concern, my concern, and the reason I wanted to put it in there is the more, as they say, the more you put in, the more specific, the better. Here we are, we just talked about Mr. Schroder not doing this document properly with the verbiage that the county wanted, and here we are dealing with it a year later. The more specific is terrific. So the more specific you are, and I did not want you to go to the library and have a fight and say, well, this doesn't apply to us, you know?
When are we scheduled to give them the money? Fe- February?
March 1st.
February 1st.
No, March 1st.
The context is strange.
Oh, does that sound like it was March 1st?
Simon Farm.
Uh, February 1st.
February 1st. Oh, that's in a couple of weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you paid your taxes yet? Okay, so we're in the middle of voting. Yay or nay?
I would like to resolve this and just say aye then.
Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm inconsistent.
Okay, so.
Just wanna move on with this. We, we.
We have one last.
And somebody told me, and I knew what was going on before I walked in the room. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we live with somebody that's on the library board.
You know, someone, that's, that's her board.
I sent you an email this.
I don't do, I don't read those emails. That's her business. It's not a public organization, so I don't.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Oh, it's over.
Or 4.6. And this is about the photocopy machine, and whether or not to accept the lease agreement from Toshiba for printing services.
So my recommendation is that we don't approve it as it exists right now on the forms, because it does not address a service level standard for meantime, between repairs, as was discussed with.
I, I, I read it too. I didn't see anything in there.
And everywhere.
We've had conversations with them. They've increased to certain service levels, but it's not reflected in the forms. And so still we have that updated. If the council wants to approve it in advance, subject to that, we can. Otherwise, I said, table it or deny it, and we'll come back with an updated document.
And then on there, it's also listed that she's the Martindale major.
Oh, the major.
Everywhere in this document.
Major Glaze?
Major Glaze?
She's Major Glaze.
There we go.
I'm gonna make a motion.
What's our title? That's what I'm.
I'm gonna make a motion to table this contract until we have further clarification and corrections to the mayor title from major to mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing done. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, the motion carries. Now a motion to adjourn?
I'm just motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
I'll second that.
That's 9:39.
9:39. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.